Yeah.
Calling to order, the November twentieth, twenty twenty five meeting of the Historic Resources Commission. Here in room two oh five, one eleven North Front Street, the time is four eight P M. The next business meeting in the commission will be Thursday, December sixth, twenty twenty five at noon, next door in room two oh five. And the next hearing of the commission will be Thursday, December eighteenth at four P M, one eleven North Front Street here in room two oh four. Jacqueline, if you could raise your right hand, you swear to tell the truth in your testimony before the commission this evening?
I do, Jacqueline Mizell.
Do we need to swear?
Yes, please.
Morgan, if you could raise your right hand, do you swear to tell the truth in your? You swear to tell the truth in your testimony before the commission this evening?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. An introduction of the commissioners here present this evening, starting on my far right. Mike Fort.
Clyde Henry.
Joe McCabe.
Stuart Gibbene, excuse me.
Megan Senna.
Thank you. And are there any items for public forum this evening?
There are no items for public forum.
Okay, hearing none, I'll move on to the approval of the staff approvals.
So moved.
Second. Having a motion in a second, is there any further discussion regarding the staff approvals? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion passes. Onto approval of the minutes from the last meeting, which was October sixteenth, twenty twenty five.
So moved.
Second.
Having a motion in a second, is there any further discussion regarding the minutes? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion passes. Onto certificates of appropriateness for this evening, starting with case number one, fourteen sixty two Brighton Road. Is there anybody here for that?
So this one was moved to staff approval at the business meeting.
Okay, well then, that is, did not catch that. I should have read that a little bit better. Onto continued applications, six fifteen South Champion Avenue. Anybody here? Come forward, sir. And before you get seated, if you could raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth in your testimony before the commission this evening? If you could state your full name and association with the property for record. Okay, wonderful, have a seat. Jacqueline.
Okay, this application for six one five South Champion Avenue is proposing to install solar panels on the east or primary and south and west rear elevations per the submitted materials. So we included in the staff analysis, the use of renewable energy from the National Park Service. And then at the November business meeting, the commissioners noted they would need to balance what the applicant needs with what can be permitted under the city code and guidelines. On primary elevations for visible panels. The commission requested the applicant include photos from across the street or further along the street to show what the view shed will be. The commission asked if the proposed panel or what the proposed panel or equipment color would be. And the commission noted they could potentially support a freestanding structure in the rear yard rather than visible panels on the primary elevation of the house in accordance with code and guidelines. The staff recommendation for this application is to recommend approval of application C O A two five one zero one three at six one five South Champion Avenue in the Old Oaks Historic District with the following conditions. And that is to remove or relocate the panels visible from the public right of way. The basis of recommendation is the C D code three one one six point eleven, standards for alteration, specifically numbers one, nine, and twelve. And then a portion of the guidelines regarding skylights is included, given their similar considerations to solar panels. At the timeline, the guidelines were written, they did not have solar panels as a common technology, so the skylights are the most similar feature in the guidelines, and we've included them here. That's on page forty nine. And with that, I'll leave it over to the commission.
Exactly. Is there anything the applicant would like to have before we open up to our discussion?
If those are the picture, oh, the first picture is not the house, actually. I believe they might have put that in. As far as I'm aware, I wasn't here for the last few years, obviously. But it was just a concern about those two panels on the front of the house on this street.
Yes.
Yes, so all of our data, we tried to work everything we could to be able to make the same production power moving those panels, even with the fireworks. But sadly, he doesn't have enough sun anywhere else on the roof. It was all just trees in the backyard. Fortunately, I don't know if it, obviously it is against code and all that, but the front of his house, as you can see in that initial picture.
And really specifically, you know, the panels we've been talking about are the two that are clouded, right? You know, at the top, that are kind of in, in the nested area of the roof. On the right hand side of the house, and then on the, the one that's directly kind of coming out, yeah, right there next to the chimney. And for us, I think that was the issue, was those three just kind of come dangerously close to being viewable for maybe the street, the street view. And wanted to really have a dialogue. Is there nothing that can be achieved with, for example, I'm going to, it's just easier for me to approach here. Or is there nothing that could be done with reorganizing it a little tighter, or is there any option?
But also, that number two there, the first one closes the, why couldn't that simply be moved down? You could slide them, but also rather than being at the, at the ridge, move it down, so that would put it further back. Yeah. Oh, that's the chimney? Okay, okay, gotcha, that's why.
I did do extensive work trying to get those panels moved, so I can work with you guys as you.
But unfortunately, the effect is production too much.
Okay, the, the top three, where it says number three.
Three?
Where it says number two. Okay. Three panels there, why could they not be slid further to the back of the house?
We're talking about two that are on the top side of this image, right?
Okay.
My fault.
Those three, why can't you slide them back?
You mean like slide them back this way, just?
Yes.
Because of the way that the framing's done, or not the framing, it's the actual racking for the solar panels, they have to be aligned as far as like parallel. So you see how there's that one on the corner? I have to keep them parallel, the panel next to it, if that makes sense.
But they're not in the back.
Right, all, all the ones labeled number one on the back roof number one are not.
Oh, do you mean you want those number one panels moved to the?
No, we want the number two panels slid back. And yes, they won't be aligned, but neither are the ones on the back of the house.
Shift it, this one, shift it, this one, just shift it.
Yeah, so the reason for that is because the racking itself that puts those solar pan, like holds the solar panels in the roof. You can't have a panel like overlapping with another. They have to be parallel for the racking, if that makes sense, just because of the way it's installed.
What would be overlapping?
I apologize.
In the back of the house, you don't have them aligned.
The number ones.
The number ones in the back of the house.
Well, I see what you're saying, yes.
Yeah. These don't seem to be aligned. I assume there's a bracket under here, a bracket under here, a bracket under here, correct?
Yes, sir.
You move these panels in the brackets this way. Why can that not happen?
Mainly is.
So if you do look at those panels that are number ones, you see how some of them are vertical and the others are horizontal?
Yes.
On the number two, all those points are horizontal. So since they are all facing the same direction, those are two different racks for the one on the backside of the roof, number one. Because one faces horizontal and the other is vertical, so they have to do that a little bit. For the spacing on number two, since they're all horizontal panels facing the same direction, they're actually all on the same bracket.
Right, we're not asking you to change the rotation of them.
I understand, I mean, you just want them to move back a couple inches, your feet, however much distance that is.
Whatever that distance is, what, what are the size of the panels?
The dimensions of the panels and those.
Get my tree.
But they're about, they're roughly about three and a half, four and five.
There we go. Gives rough dimensions anyway, five.
Okay, so, okay, so you got this one four feet. Well, it's four feet from here here. So that looks like that's right, that's probably three feet over there. So you're saying that these have got to be connected together.
Right, as far as I understand, yes. I'm not actually an engineer.
Yeah, because it would seem that, okay, would it be possible to put three panels on here?
On the bottom?
I mean, yeah, theoretically, would it be possible to put three panels on here?
It would, if the chimney wasn't there.
No, okay, but you, you have three panels here, one, two, three. That's possible. Is it possible to put these three panels there without putting these three panels here theoretically?
Theoretically, yes.
Yes. Would it be possible to put three panels up here? Here, here, and here?
Yes.
Okay, that's what we're asking you to do. We're asking you to put these three panels where you have them. We're asking you to put these three panels here, here, and here. Is that possible?
I would be, I don't believe it is, just because of those trusses as well. So I do understand that.
Right, but you just said that it was possible to put these three here, here, and here separately.
Oh, well, I, I apologize, I didn't understand your question correctly. It's all done with the trusses, so you see those dashed lines that go through?
Yeah.
Those are the trusses that we have to install it into themselves. And what I would assume is that the engineers, there's fire codes and we can't get too close to them sometimes.
So here's my suggestion, I'm thinking that maybe, and we appreciate you trying to explain, but you aren't the expert on it, and you might be asking technical questions. So if you, again, hearing our concerns, I think maybe your engineer needs to take a look, because even with the trusses, we are seeing lines, and we keep arguing about it all evening. We aren't designers, we aren't engineers, neither are you. Our concern is that those front panels might be visible from the street. So I think what you need to tell us is, is it possible to remove those so that they aren't visible or prove to us by, by videography or photography that those aren't, like some, because that's where, because we haven't gone to site, we don't know.
I do have quite a few pictures.
So let's talk about that.
We have any?
I do remember seeing it in the.
We requested pictures from across the street. Did you or did you not submit those?
I believe they did submit them, I saw them in the very beginning. It was the second picture. So that's, if you go to the second picture, you see, you remember those first panels that were supposed to go on the front side for the tree of this? That's that very small portion, it's actually very hard to see. I had to back up like into the neighborhood. To be able to get it to that. So I, you wouldn't be able to see that on the street, it's a steep roof, and there's a lot of trees. I had to make quite an effort to just get that picture itself. And then on the other side of his roof, which would be, I believe, the south facing portion.
What's your timeline? When are you trying to get this going?
We want to get it done by the end of the year.
So we have a little bit of time, just in case.
Yeah, the only issue is availability with having someone here to do the meeting itself.
It might be blurred out, but. And one of the things I wanted to mention, the commission had brought up earlier, or at prior hearings or business meetings, is that there was support for freestanding solar panels in the rear, which is also a consideration that the National Park Service supports as well. So just want to put that out there in case that was a possibility. I know the, the roof, there may be limited space, and with the vegetation as far as the rear, but if there's any opportunities for a freestanding solar structure to accommodate those additional panels while reducing the visibility.
Right. Sadly, he had too much shade in the backyard, and the freestanding structure would add too much of a cost to it, so that wasn't a possibility for him. Even though I did see that, some suggestions.
So if, so the view that you were before, if you go there, so all we need, we'll ask you for a big currency on Google, so we can, if you took a picture. Exactly, if you took a picture of standing this far and looking at.
Right about there.
Yes.
If you can see that, then that's a problem. If you can't see, then we have a different consideration.
I mean, I mean, there's the chimney, quite frankly. So that's a good. See that, and so that's, that's why we, we have a concern about it.
There we go.
So I think we.
So yes, you're seeing it.
Yeah, you're, you're definitely going to see that.
I, it'd be a little outdated on the images, while I want to say there's some vegetation that covers that pretty well, but I could be wrong.
But you know, trees can be trimmed over time, trees lose their leaves, you know, right now is actually the start of a great time to go take some photos, because you're, you're going to see, you know, the most.
I get what you're saying, regardless of whether there's trees there, it'll be visible.
It's not the matter of one or two, we'll be able to see all the twos, most of the two.
Yeah. I mean, given the technology, I'm willing to be a little bit flexible on placement, so long as it doesn't impact the primary street elevation. I know other commissioners may have a, a different point of view.
And, and to.
We're trying to meet you in the middle on this, because we don't, we don't want to, you know, the progressiveness of incorporating this is a great thing. However, we, we are charged with one thing, which is protecting the historical context to this neighborhood.
Right. That clearly is the only issue on my side, is just placement of panels, because his roof is so small, he doesn't actually get a lot of sun.
Is there also an opportunity to have the canopies trimmed up by an arborist that would allow you more sunlight?
Or, the only problem is those aren't his trees, so they're actually the neighbor's trees, and that would be a whole nother, I'd have to work it out with the neighbor.
Yeah.
So they will be visible regardless on our end, if we do want to produce the power that he needs.
So we have a couple options. We could continue it, if you think there's value to that, to look at other options, or we could consider what's there today and vote on it accordingly, whatever you'd like to do.
I would appreciate if we could just vote on it today. I don't believe there is any other way around it besides maybe taking the panels off. I was under the impression that it was just those first two on the front facing side that face east, I believe it is, right there.
No, it's, it's those.
All of the side as well. Those are very necessary.
Well, we started with one of the, the twos, but then I think, now that we're seeing the image, you might be seeing a lot more than just the one panel, so.
And it is possible that that panel could be slid back, like you were saying, Clyde. I can check with the team. I believe that they would have already ran that.
I mean, it look, if, if in fact, the, the structures, you noted by the dotted lines and the blue dots, are your structural attachments? Is that correct? Because they seem to line up.
I'd have to see the picture, but I believe that is what it is. For the points of contact between.
It would, yeah, it would seem that it would be easy to slide it at least at least one, and they may be two feet on center, they may be sixteen inches on center, depending upon the age of the house.
I think I can work that out with the team. I'm about ninety percent sure. But I believe that that's something that we could do.
How about this?
Possible.
Can we put the brakes for right now, he can go out, call somebody that knows what's going, maybe they.
That would actually be perfect.
And then, I don't know if that's a possibility. Can we take a little recess on that one and then come back? We can come back to your case.
So, yes.
Okay.
Thank you for your patience.
Wait, can you also find out, unless you haven't answered, the color of the panels that are?
Oh, they're black. Just black on black, it's all black metal, polychristine.
Great, how about that?
And for the commission, where did we stand on panel number, panels that are labeled number ones? We're talking about shifting the twos, and makes sense, understand that. What about panel one and one that are highlighted in that cloud?
Those have always been a problem, yeah.
And but what I'm understanding from the applicant is that they need to be there to make this a viable project. And that there isn't any flexibility, is that, am I hearing that correctly?
Yes, and actually, those two number one panels on the, on the top side, they're originally on the.
Lower.
That, yeah, the right side over there. That's where the original were, because they produce quite a bit more than they would on that north side of the roof. I don't know if they included that.
Let's see what it looks like.
And there is really no way to utilize. And there is really no way to utilize this southern back half.
I really wish there was, because it is the best part of his roof. However, he, his neighbors have multiple pictures on that side of his fence. I believe they include.
Well, the good news is this is kind of a temporary material, and I think technology is making these better, smaller.
Yeah, for sure.
Built in, so it's easier to mask them. So maybe, you know, the alternative down the road might be.
What's, what's the, yeah, what's what's the useful life?
The use, what's that?
How, how, how long are these expected to, should, before they need to be replaced?
Um, so they're expected to last anywhere from sixty to seventy years. They're kind of like phone batteries. They don't just stop working, they just degrade, they lose efficiency.
Oh, that changes things. No, we're thinking they're gonna be on there for a couple of years.
Yeah, they they typically, the term that we do is twenty-five to thirty years, and then you can't have them replaced, um, but they are supposed to be there as long as they're producing power.
They're as as permanent as the roof.
That's just lifespan of the panels themselves. A lot of people actually end up taking them off at thirty years, just because technology has progressed quite a bit, and they want to replace those panels. Um, that's just the lifespan of them. They typically don't stay on roofs for that long.
We, we have been generally supportive of.
Of course.
Yeah.
And I appreciate you guys. Um, just to clarify, the main issue was those, those pan, those three panels on the top side, and you wanted them slid back as as much as possible to bring them out of view of the street?
You know, it, the, and the ironic part is, is you're talking about maximizing your sun. I mean, according to this, that one panel would be in the shadow of the chimney anyways.
Well, the, you're, you're correct. The way that it, the sun comes up and down, though, it'll only be shaded for one part where the sun is here, the chimney is here in the panel, right? Besides that, it's east to west, so it's catching sun from different angles all day. So that chimney only blocks it for a short amount of time throughout the day.
So we do have an issue with those other two panels. Is that what I'm understanding?
I mean, the, the question also comes down to is, you know, regardless of what happens about sliding these ones on the south side, there's still these issues, the two on the north side that can't seem to go away.
The number ones.
And I know from the pictures, it looks like it is maybe a little more visible in person, those panels, like that part of the roof is actually very hard to get a look at. Like, I had to get, I had to go to the neighbor's yard and like walk back to their fence to be able to even take a picture of it itself. It's pretty steep and up there. You wouldn't be, like, from the sidewalk on his side of the street, you wouldn't be able to see that at all.
In, in general, I'm having a hard time. It feels like, uh, some speculation, like on my part to really understand what it would look like from the street, so I'm having a hard time coming to your viewpoint. And I understand to make this project viable for you, you need all those there, but it also feels like we're trying to work. And it doesn't feel like there's much meeting in the middle in terms of making this a viable project, but also taking our feedback into account.
Right.
As the other commissioners have stated, we want to make exceptions for this technology and understanding that this is a good thing. Um, but, uh, I'm, I'm just having a hard time seeing your perspective at this point, because it doesn't feel like we've covered much ground in terms of coming to a compromise.
Of course. And on your guys' side, what would be the best option or something that you would allow? Because for us, we just need to make sure that it's producing enough power that it is beneficial to him.
Sure.
He really doesn't have. To do that. The only options would be move panels where they're not effective or to remove them completely.
And if you remove them completely, what does that do? So if you remove two or three panels, what what does that do for your project?
It would drop the production quite a bit, so he would be paying more for electricity overall. The main goal of this is these, he's not paying anything out of pocket. He's swapping his bill to pay less for electricity, right? And if he was to have panels removed, then he's just more subject to paying AEP for power themselves and rate increases in the future, so. It's not as beneficial to him if he can't have the majority of his power.
Somewhat beneficial, right? It's just not maximum beneficial, right? So I think that's what we're looking for is a recognition that maybe there is still a viable project. It's up to the homeowner whether or not they assess that. I think from our perspective, what we're looking at is we want to minimize the visual impact from the road.
Yeah, if you panels on front side. On that very front side, it is possible that.
That's an image right there of the two, where the two panels would be. I think that's just too highly visible.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's just.
I'm sorry, I didn't realize we had other panels in the mix. I apologize. But it seems like we've got more than just those that are of concern. Based on visibility.
That's the house, right? Yeah, so we'd see the ones on this side, right? I think that's, that's the concern.
Yeah, so the only option for that would be to either move them to the other plane, right to the. Move them completely.
Yeah. Well, if you move them, we'll see them. I mean, but you get the point, right? So if you were here and if you're seeing, you should be able to see it. So we, we like the idea of solar panels. We think that's great. You know, where the future is going and all that. But our job is to make sure that the historic look and feel of the house isn't disturbed. Um, so it's not a personal thing. It's just we're supposed to follow those rules, and from here you can see it. So as much as we can hide it, and then nobody cares, and we're fine. We're all on board with that. And in this case, we are a little bit, it's hard, because if we make an exception for you, it will open up the floodgates, so well, I want to do the same thing. So what if it shows up on my property too? I think, so we have to set the right precedent. So that's what we are. We're not trying to. We want to work with you, but this is becoming harder.
And and there has been a lot of guidance from, you know, um, we've looked, because this is a newer technology to things that are, you know, example, guidance from the National Trust or other entities that are giving guide guidance on that. And that's why they suggest things like IE freestanding racks in backyards, those kinds of things that you don't affect the building.
Sure.
Uh, per se at all.
Right.
Yeah, and the fact is that solar doesn't work for all properties because of trees and, and, you know, sun angles and all, we know that. So I mean, I think this may just unfortunately be one of those, but that's your call.
Is there, um, a way that you guys could work with me if we were able to move the panels off of that front structure? And to slide them back a little bit so they're behind that chimney more?
So, so what I would love to do is, if you could go back to the plan, the roof plan, and so that it is, it is one hundred percent clear, what I'm going to ask you to do is, in an unusual scenario, I would like you to approach the screen and show us exactly what you're. This is getting too confusing at times, and I just want to make sure we understand exactly what it is you're asking us, so we can give you the right guidance.
So if you go to the. They were initially supposed to be there, but.
That was not, we were, we were not gonna ever probably likely going to approve that based on the.
But these two were the ones that you guys were concerned about. What I was wondering is if there was a chance that you would be willing to work with me if we could move these three panels back a little more to make them less visible? I can remove these and we can just keep these, because these are essential.
I think if you came back with a proposal that reflected that you're, you're going to be warmly received by a number of people on the commission.
Well, I can go get something drawn up and say.
If, if, uh, if things are in quickly enough for the business meeting, we could contemplate whether we could make him, make an action at the business.
Okay. And you guys need any more pictures from the street, or is there anything else I could provide that would make it a little easier for you?
I think a revised drawing would be a.
And just to clarify, it would be with these two panels completely gone, these hopefully moved back. I will let you know if it's not possible.
Yeah.
Well, fifty-fifty on that. I do believe it's a possibility, though. But I really appreciate you guys.
Yeah, no, thank you.
I make a motion to continue.
Second.
Having a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, abstention, motion passes. Please continue to work with Jaclyn and the staff in the preservation office, just to make sure that we know when to expect your case.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Uh, moving on to case number three, new application, eight fifty-one Bryon Road. If you could both remain standing and raise your right hands, do you each swear to tell the truth in your testimony before the commission this evening?
Yes.
If you could both state your full name and association with the property for record.
Camden Permer, uh, Pella, Flubus.
Okay.
And Toffelab, property owner.
Great, wonderful, thank you.
Okay, this application for eight five one Bryon Road is proposing to move exterior storm windows and as well as replace ten existing one-over-one windows with Pella Reserve aluminum cloud windows from the approved windows list. Um, and then we'd be painting exterior wood elements, iron ore, to match the color of the new windows. So this property includes a circa eighteen eighties brick queen Anne style residence, and a Skype site visit was completed yesterday. Um, so based on that site visit, the existing storms are not historic. Oh, and let me switch over here. Um, so we'd support removing or replacing the existing storms. Now, the windows themselves looked, um, repairable. They do look historic, and I want to turn this over to Morgan Graff, just being the window repair expert here, uh, had a little more, um, detail.
Yeah, so the windows did seem to be in repairable shape. There were a couple, are actually maybe, maybe one or two of the bottom meeting rails of the top sash that were kind of sagging. Or, um, you know, there are morts and tenon joints, maybe, of course, deteriorating where they need to be repaired. Uh, so we did see maybe about one or two of those. Um, there were some sashes that were sliding down in the jam. Um, but that normally is technically a mechanical problem that can be easily fixed, be reattached to ropes and the weights, of course. Um, because that sometimes, of course, deteriorates over time. Um, so there are a couple of windows like that. Um, luckily, those were in interior and exterior storms, so they were well protected, so that's positive. Um, but yeah, looking at the joints, the joints looked like they were in pretty good shape. Um, the storms definitely helped keeping, um, you know, retaining that, some of the storms that were removed from those openings, that's where we saw some of the damage. Um, with that said, sagging meeting rail and things of that nature.
And was there any prominent elevation that had more damage than others, i.e. sometimes I know weather, weather can really drive, be driven hard on a certain elevation?
Um, oh gosh, it's the, it's the elevation facing the corner of the street, which I'm not sure which one that is based off. East, thank you, thank you, Josh. The east one did seem to appear to have a little bit more damage, just because there were some storms missing from the elevation. Um, from what we could see, I believe.
Jaclyn, is there a matter of your report?
Um, there is the one bathroom window that has the bottom pane of glass. So you see, it's been replaced with like a fiber, um, a privacy glass. You can replace the glass again. Um, and we would support that. And so based on the site visit, um, the staff recommendation is to support um, approval of application, COA two five one zero three five at eight five one Bryon Road in the Bryon Road Historic District, with the condition that the windows themselves be repaired, um, since they are historic and appear to be in good repairable condition, and that the storm windows either be removed or we can also approve low-profile metal replacements. The basis for the staff recommendation is the city code three one one six point eleven standards for alterations, specifically numbers five, two, and six. And then the guidelines regarding windows and then the guideline amendments also regarding windows. Thank you.
I'd like to open this up to the app to, to provide additional commentary before we open up.
So, yeah, I mean, the, the reason that we're bringing this forward um, is basically because of the, obviously, the condition, you know, um, in many instances, I think the windows, um, like, maybe there's a technical way to repair them, but I think you're gonna end up replacing a lot of the wood and other components of them, just because they are in such bad condition. My personal viewpoint on it is the storms, many of which are broken, are in, like, you know, they are really in pretty terrible condition as well, and the look that we're getting, so what we also have on the interior is interior storms that are like plexiglass and metal. And it basically makes everything just completely unusable. Um, you know, none of the windows are functional, none of the storm windows are functional, and then we have these like plastic inserts on the inside. So my preference really is to, you know, restore that to a single individual, um, component, which would be the new windows. Um, yeah, I mean, just from a visual standpoint, from my perspective, it would vastly improve it from the inside and the outside, I think. Um, there's been a lot of modifications to various components of this home over the years, but, um, yeah, I don't know. I'm happy to answer questions, but that's.
Can you describe the, I didn't quite follow the plastic insert on the inside. I understand the storm and the wood windows, but what, what told me more about the?
I would call it an interior storm, so it's, it's like, um.
Fitted with a kind of rubbery perimeter?
No, it's a metal perimeter, and then it's magnetized, so it's like.
Okay, the magnet.
Yeah, and then it like, it like, up to it.
There was a popular brand called Indo.
Yeah.
For a while.
Yeah.
Were snug fit.
They're absolutely horrible. I mean, you can't, you can't even see through them. Uh, we've taken them off in most locations, but there's actual, like, you can see the outside through the windows, like, there's air coming through, like, you know, there's no seal or anything.
The idea of those to improve the performance of a poor, poor performing window, you add in an insert and it.
I mean, that's, obviously, it was done before my time.
Sure.
Uh, but yes, I'm, I, you know, it, it does seal them pretty well. In fact, and there's also, we're not applying for, there's a sunroom, but that's the only place where we really have them all actually up anymore. And you can, when the wind blows, they're like, they move a little bit, because they're trying to get, so they do seal it very well. It's just a hideous look.
Sure.
Um, you know, and so, and they just, the plastic or whatever it is made out of plexiglass or something has deteriorated over time, so it's not very clear. I think that there's a few still up, and so we have, there might be a few images of those, because we've left them in rooms that we don't like really use currently.
Yeah, that's fine. I, I, yeah, obviously no historical significance. I just didn't understand.
No, no.
I, I can vouch to having had a property with those. When you want to open the window, you just, it's not a process of opening the window, because you're met with this interior storm that's just a large, solid piece that you have to get.
Yeah.
There's no stone of screens.
Right, right.
No modern convenience factors. Can be a challenge.
Right.
And the plexi does kind of yellow or fade. It does things that are not, not great over time.
It would not be a recommended treatment, I don't think. I don't know if it was approved or not at one point, maybe. Uh, they did a renovation in the nineties where they kind of restored to this.
Now, I guess I'll just say that I'm not, I'm no window experts, but if the staff have reviewed or come to site and seen the windows and believe, um, some of them are, can be salvaged and just repaired, I think typically that's our goal. If you can salvage historic material, um, to repair it and keep it as such. Because that's all, I'll say, but I'll lean on, um, the architects here to say, say their piece.
The addition I would, the one thing I would add to it, and maybe it's an unfortunate situation, where I think the ones that are probably in the best condition are the ones that are not street-facing, because this, you know, the street is where the weather's coming in on the east and north elevations.
Usually, usually I, I advocate for if you can keep the intact front elevation original.
Yeah.
But I.
Yeah, it, it, I mean, it looks like there's been a lot of.
There has been a lot of manipulation.
Yeah, a lot of additional pieces added over time, like for a long time. It looks like some of these additional pieces of wood have been added onto this, these windows.
Yeah.
Thirty, forty years ago.
If I may, the piece that has been added, especially if you can see it at the meeting rail, has been added because the sashes have either slipped down or the meeting rail has, of course, becoming slightly detached. So it's normally been added just to add the lock to make for security purposes. Yeah, so there's a lot of those pieces on some of the windows just because of that situation.
The, I'll just add one other thing, and that's just for overall context. So obviously, we, the number ten is wrong, because there's like a lot more than that. Um, I think there's closer.
Nineteen windows.
Nineteen, yes. Sorry, I, I noticed that in the application. But we are keeping, there's fifteen, um, I think there're six over six windows on the back, uh, on the sunroom. And then there are two one-over-ones that are part of the bay window, and the, those are all remaining. And then we also have, um, one, two, three, one, um, leaded glass piece over a bay window looking out to the street, and then a whole kind of, uh, turret-ish situation that has a series of leaded glass windows that are remaining as well. So I think, um, I would just add that as overall context, that even if the one-over-ones were replaced, those are the kind of more simple situation while you have the remaining more architectural pieces.
And the third floor is not even.
And the third floor is not. No, it's very expensive to replace little custom weird windows, so.
And those would be rebuilt. And those would be rebuilt, any of these other ones that you said are not being replaced.
Yeah, I mean, actually, we probably just, the, the leaded glass windows are all in really good condition. Or, I mean, to, they're not operable anyway, so we wouldn't be doing any work to those there. They, they must have been restored when they did it in the nineties. It's really the one over ones.
The, the question I'll ask is, in terms of, like, if they were repaired, and I know we mentioned replacing the outside storms. If they were repaired, was the, the idea to completely remove those outside storms on the outside? So it goes back to the original look, or to put those outside storms back on?
I mean.
You could do either, we wouldn't require you to remove them since they're already there. If you would like to remove them, you could do so. If you like to replace them, we could approve that administratively as well.
Just the reason I ask is just to keep it as historically accurate and looking as possible. Our idea is replace with the Pella Reserve, which is our most historically accurate window, of course. So that way, it can be as historical as possible without the, the exterior storms on there. So you can see the full window and get its whole historic character.
Is there, is there an elevation that marks out for all of the sides? Which ones are being kept, which ones are being repaired, replaced?
It is possible to restore them, but.
I think in the application, there may be.
There's pictures of each elevation.
Yeah, but like within these, which ones are going to be repaired, replaced?
So there's the, like, sleeping porch. Those are all remaining.
So we can ignore that?
Yeah, you can ignore that. And then on the third floor, you can ignore those. The, and then you can't really see any of the leaded glass ones in these photos right here. And the bay window in the front.
Are staying.
Yeah, it's effectively only the one over ones are like paired one over ones.
Are being replaced with one signature.
All of them, yeah.
These.
Yes, yes.
And on the front elevation?
The one over ones.
Yeah, on the front elevation, they're really only on the second floor. Because it's a bay window that's remaining on the first floor.
It's fair, so you fix it.
We can provide that to you if you, as a supplemental thing, if you.
I'm just confused looking, I don't know which ones are going, commenting. So that one, these three?
I think unfortunately, other than the applicants' elevated elevations, all their other ones are kind of close up.
Yeah, I think I'm having a little difficulty, I was sharing. I'm having a hard time understanding all the window locations relative to each facade as well. I know some of your close up images are really showing a lot of damage, but I'd like to have a little bit more context for the scope of what we're addressing. Can't quite wrap my head around it.
Do we just have a front picture of the house kind of straight on anywhere? Okay, yes, perfect. Could you just walk up to?
Yeah, I would love to.
Walk up to the, the image and just walk us through every window? Yes, saved versus suggested replaced?
Replaced, everything else saved. So there's only three windows in the front elevation. I, I think as mentioned, I don't know that there's other elevation, full elevation photos, maybe if we follow up Google Maps, you can see the other street facing elevation.
The, go back for a second, would you? Just, the arched window there, upstairs, the left, the left.
Oh, yeah.
Is that an original window, was that installed that way?
Original might be the wrong word. I would say it is within the period of significance, but I don't know that it's original, original, because, I mean, it is a wood window. It's one of the wood windows that we've looked at.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's made me wonder whether these were the actual windows.
So the house was built in eighteen eighty eight.
Yeah, so.
It underwent a number of renovations, even in the early eighteen hundreds, there was a fire. I mean, the old Citizen Journal or whatever states there was a fire in a portion of it at one point. So, you know, original is not a word that I would use, but I think they are probably.
Nineteen ten?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is that house.
Which, I, I mean, the, the way it infills the space a little bit. If you would replace that, what would the replacement be, the, the current one? Or would you go back to the full opening, or?
No, I didn't, no.
Can you go back to that picture?
I definitely.
Joe, quit telling people.
The elevation in the front photo?
This one over here. They got the original window on the inside, putting our different frame within the old frame, which the boats are. Placing on that and on the outside, the whole cap to a little, so we have a bend over the top to match the color of the window itself. That makes sense. So instead of placing the, like it is now with the rectangular.
Right.
The bend.
So you're basically doing like for like.
Yes.
As opposed to restoring what may have been the original.
Are you suggesting that there may have been arch at the top of the window?
Yeah, yeah, what I'm wondering is because.
There's a lot of homes in this neighborhood that have arched lintel conditions, but don't have.
Right, I know, I know.
Weird.
Right, right, they, they did them both ways, depending on the budget. But, but they, but they do have the arch on the bottom one. And, and I was just looking at the sort of the infill condition on the sides there and wondering if that was more like a nineteen, whatever change to it. I don't know, and I guess we have no picture, we don't know.
If I could mention something real quick, just looking at the, at the photos, I'm so sorry to interrupt. But there is a different profile on that top sash in the bathroom than what the profile we saw on the other windows. So I think you might be right, Commissioner Henry, that it could possibly be a replacement, so.
Yeah.
Also the one of, it's designed as a non-creased glass in it, so.
Oh, yeah.
All the profiles in the house were kind of a bevel when this one appears to be an OG. So that kind of helps identify a little bit of the change.
And then looking at kind of the auditor floor plan that's been at least included, that does help us. Walk us, so there are some additional pictures here. Let's get a sense of some things, I'd like to just walk through, and go back up.
Jacqueline.
See how could I identify which windows in which place I'm perched on. Just haven't looked at them all. Okay. Yeah, so on this elevation, this is, this is kind of the, let's say, see, this is the west facing elevation. So the, this is already a replacement window. So these two, all, all of these would be replaced. This, there's a bay here that there's not a photo of. All of those remain because those are the leaded glass windows.
And then the three at the top would also remain, in your proposal too.
Yeah.
Okay, then elevation four, that is the rear of the house with the sleeping porch you mentioned, which none of those are being.
There's only one window that would be replaced here, because there's only one historic window on this elevation. The others are already replacements, so it would be, it's right here on the corner. That's the only one on that elevation.
And the windows up top, that's the sleeping porch you mentioned, six over sixes, you're not replacing those.
Yeah.
Okay.
So the only other elevation that we're not looking at, well, it's terrible to see in this photo, but this is the east elevation. So there, there's one leaded glass window on a projection.
We just need better.
Yeah. This one, if we do go to the street view, this, you'd be able to get a good one of this.
Maybe so.
Let's continue this. Why don't we do this, why don't we continue with, we'll give you a chance to show us elevations, which ones are going, which ones are not. I think, I think we're along the right path.
If we can walk through though, on, on the street view, if there's a possibility to still discussing.
There's too many details that the file I think would need at some point. You know, we can't, I don't know if we can.
And this is a pretty clear.
True, but that's not in the packet.
Right. And I mean, it's requiring us to take a leap of.
Well, however, we have, have a lot of applicants to follow up packages with staff that they.
True.
That reflect documentation.
Of drawings.
Other arch windows that I have.
Yeah.
The only ones based on this elevation.
So this is a great, clear photo, walk me through which ones are.
All the ones except for these two. These two remain, all the others.
And for the staff, when you, I mean, that would be the other layer, so this is what the applicant's saying. And the staff has seen these, and you believe some of these can be salvaged.
The recommendation again.
That's, that's a good thing, like, where do we?
Well, you know, I, I, I go back to practicality here a little bit. And there may be a difference of opinion between commission and staff, there has been that in the past. I just worry, like, what is the useful life of some of these windows if they are rebuilt? And we'll, you'll be back here in five or 10 years, I'll go through this all over again. The storm windows do, you know, distract from the original look of the home. I'm at least pleased that you kept all the signature windows, that, you know, that the, the unique ones have all been proposed to be retained. And I think the most common practic, you know, really, the, the applicant here has sort of only proposed to replace the most common no frill window, the vernacular basic window. So I, I, I look at how problematic exterior storms are right now, even getting exterior storms have been problematic. I've heard from some folks in, in the preservation industry, just because fabrication is not what it used to be. So getting exterior storms is just, has been somewhat difficult. So I, I kind of feel a little bit for the applicant who may want to have a functioning window at some point.
Yeah, I, I would tend to agree with that, that's, it's a, it's a difficult situation here. But the, the principal windows and the success rate of rebuilding windows have been somewhat questionable at times. There's probably people who do it better than others, but the problem is always getting the, getting, getting the right wood and, and everything else. I mean, I've done projects where we've rebuilt windows and not always successfully.
Unfortunately, I remember some of our earliest cases and windows were before we had accepted vinyl clad or aluminum clad, sorry, aluminum clad windows. And there were wood window people that came back and said, the wood windows I put in four or five years ago have now rotted already. So we had people who did replacement wood windows and followed our guidelines and, you know, sort of paid the price. And so I just would, would hate to see the applicant spend money if some of these are not going to hold up. Especially if they've made a commitment to saving the most iconic windows of the house. I know that this is probably a different sub opinion versus what staff is making a report on, you know, and.
Yeah, I think I tend to align with staff a little bit more on this one.
I do too.
I think it specifically talks about, when possible, try to repair original material. And the best information that I feel like I have to go on is Morgan's onsite assessment that there are windows that are repairable. And that's where I would lean.
Yeah. I mean, the other strategy could be that if, on the back side, if there are better windows, and if they, I don't know, again, I can't tell. But if they look sim, or if they're exactly what the front is, can you take some of those better windows that are historic on the back?
It's a sleeping porch on the back.
I don't know, I thought they said that there were other windows that were in better condition than the front elevation. But again, I, if you can just replace those and so, but I, I agree, I feel like, maybe it's just confusing and that's not helping either, the whole package. But I do agree that we don't want to, on a facade, save one, replace one, I mean, that just looks exactly the same and that starts looking funky.
I don't know if this is helpful or just adds more to the confusion, but given that the one bathroom window is a later one based on that profile, we could support replacement of that bathroom one.
Oh, you're saying just like the one, just consider the one first?
If it factors in, you know, to your evaluation, or if it's helpful for the applicant. So this one over here.
I think based on the confusion factor of not having full photographs, would the applicant like more time to build her case and to consider options? Consider some of the feedback.
Potentially, there's one other commissioner, if you have any comments, I'd be interested in hearing.
Since I've not done a site visit, I'm taking a tremendous amount of firsthand information from staff. I am absolutely torn by the functionality, but I also understand finding a product of wood today that could withstand what these have is going to be very difficult. I've seen a lot of windows that were pretty rough, there are some of these that do have a bit of deterioration. I don't know if they all do, so I'm torn of how to handle that.
Would it be helpful for any of the commissioners to do a commissioner's site visit?
Firstly, I think the application, the application can be made less confusing for us. Take a picture of all these elevations, clear pictures, say, these three are in poor repair. Here are the pictures on, an assessment of why they're in poor repair. These are great, we're going to keep these, I mean, whatever, so that we are not guessing and spending all this time, again, we are just, right now.
Yeah, the, the one other element that would help, along those same lines for me, would be elevation, number all the windows. And then we could reference them quickly and say, okay, this one is replaced, it's number one. Here are close up images of the condition of that. And I think that would help me wrap my head around really the totality of the condition of all the windows being proposed to be.
And, and also would indicate clearly all the ones that he's proposed saving, because it sounds.
Exactly.
Yeah, yeah.
Kind of feature windows.
Save.
Just, so it's very clear. And then additionally, I think you alluded to a couple of windows not being original. And Ie, staff, you know, has already said likely the bathroom when the front is not original. I think you said there were some on the back that may not be original too. Maybe just including all that for our knowledge.
Sure.
Is maybe, maybe helps, helps your case?
Yeah, yeah, I can do that, okay.
Yeah.
So motion to continue on this?
So moved. Second.
Having a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all of us say aye.
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 Opposed, abstention, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Onto case number four, that's fifteen thirty Bryon Road. If you could raise your right hand. Do you spread the tell the truth in your testimony for the commission this evening? If you could state your full name and association with the property for record.
Henry Harnett, owner.
Okay, wonderful, have a seat. Jacqueline.
This application is for fifteen thirty Bryon Road, is proposing to replace wood siding with new hardy, purissementing materials. And we've also left the replacement of the windows on, just since the applicant has provided some additional information. And we'd like to commission feedback and, you know, get that more quickly. So we kept that on the agenda. And so the fifteen thirty Bryon Road includes a turn of the century wood frame home with the free classic Queen Anne style elements. The commission had moved repair of gutters and replacement of windows to staff approval with a few conditions. The applicant has followed up with some additional information, and then because of some clarity things, we just wanted to keep that on for further commission comments. Staff conducted a site visit on November fifth. The majority of siding appeared to be replacement siding and included a mix of profiles. This is consistent with the applicant's information they received from the prior owner, in which the siding was estimated to have been replaced several decades ago. And much of the siding has experienced water damage due to leaking gutters and roofing. The clapboard siding portion at the front first floor beneath the porch appears to be original, older wood siding. Some trim has been replaced, and that would be due to the porch area often providing greater protection to windows and siding in this area of the home. And often, original siding would likely have been retained in this area as a result. Given the narrow profile and the older siding that remains at the front, the replacement siding, we believe, is likely intended to match that original siding profile and reveal in general. Due to the amount, the significant amount of siding that has been replaced in the past, as well as the visible water damage throughout, staff's recommendation is to replace the siding with the condition that any new siding matched the original siding. With the condition that any new siding matched the original siding profile and reveal as closely as possible. With siding being a significant element of the original design and character of the historic resource. Staff recommends replacement siding exposure either be wood or smooth cementitious siding with a three to four inch exposure to get as close as possible. To the original siding. As we know, we have approved foreign siding for cementitious in, by the historic resource commission and the other historic commissions. And then they do mill wood to be any reveal that which you would like or any size. And then that would be to match the existing original siding and material size and appearance stipulated by the guidelines and city code. At the November business meeting, the, the commissioners noted that since the dormer windows have existed for many years and their current altered configuration, a like for like replacement can be supported. The commission noted that they would not be able to support a different alteration, creating one large window, as this would create a more contemporary design that does not fit the character of the age and style of the home. The commission noted they couldn't support installing double hung windows going back and that they lower interior side, or the interior side could be drywalled over or blackout film could be applied on the interior side if the applicant desired. Noting that this technique has allowed other applicants to have windows appear historically accurate on the outside, but on the inside it covers the bottom half of the windows. The commission had asked if the applicant has considered a window color other than white, since it'll be navy colored siding and not quite white trim, the classic white color of replacement windows may stand out more as replacements. And there may be some options of grays or blacks. The commission noted that they were amenable to installing cementitious replacement siding, particularly with it being difficult currently to find good quality wood siding material. The commission noted that they are supportive installing Hardy or a different cementitious siding, as long as the siding is smooth faced and then the reveal is accurate. They will need to grapple with the reveal. Getting down to the correct reveal will be the biggest thing. The commission noted they recall past cases where a smaller reveal was approved for Hardy. And would like to see something from the manufacturer that they cannot produce a smaller reveal. The commission noted that the narrowness is part of the architecture and asked that the applicant include documentation of what the head jams and sealed trims will be, including sizes and how they detail together. The commission noted that there's a specific look with the amount of overhang and will need to know whether it is going in and be documented for approval purposes. The commission had asked about the glass block basement windows, noting the existing glass block windows appear new and very prominent. And some commissioners noted the upper sash on the diagrams appear different than the historic windows with the narrow upper sash. So asked the applicant to make sure that the window dimensions on the diagram match the historic windows. So street views show the property to have had glass block windows from two thousand and seven or earlier, and there is some vegetation that previously reduced the view. Of the glass block that was removed in two thousand and twenty-three that may make them look a little bit more prominent. Following the business meeting feedback, the applicant has included a letter from Columbus reclaimed. Noting that the smallest reveal that they have available in Hardy board is five inches. And so the, given that we've approved smaller sightings for HRC and other historic commissions and for. Various cementitious sightings, the staff recommendation is still that the applicant submit replacement siding to more closely match the clapboard profile and exposure. Somewhere between three to four inches to get closer to that narrow reveal. And that any replacement windows either match the historic windows or like for like replacements. The applicant has submitted a proposed on a window for these windows here with a sort of simulated divided light. Our recommendation, if they're going to do like for like replacement is to do individual rather than a single factory mold unit. Where you're either retaining the existing molyne or installing a new molyne with trim over, applied over the molyne piece. The other question I have, and we can just discuss that today, the applicant submitted a drawing at the request of the commission showing better the detail. This does say a fixed window, so I just want to clarify, I believe the existing window is operational as far as the lower sash, but the existing transom, upper transom portion of the sash is fixed. And then finally, the general recommendation. Would be to recommend approval of the application with the condition that the applicant submit replacement siding to match the profile and reveal and exposure more closely, somewhere between three to four inches. And that any replacement windows match those historic or like for like replacement. That staff recommendation is based on the city code three one one six point eleven standards for alteration, specifically numbers two, five, six, eleven and twelve. And then the guidelines regarding siding. Thank you.
The applicant. This time before. Discussion discussion.
I'll add that. Every time that. We get wind or rain that enters the house and has started to do some significant damage to the interior as Jacqueline and Morgan saw on their visit. So we're trying to find the best materials we can to. Solve that issue. On top of that. We have a, a baby arriving in six weeks, so we're rather eager to get this. Completed before then, especially with winter weather coming probably before that.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
One of the things that I just want to point out is I know you submitted a letter from Columbus reclaimed regarding a six point two five inch plank with a five inch reveal. Just a real quick search I did on my own. I found a James Hardy, legitimate James Hardy plank product, smooth siding. Five point two five inches with a four inch exposure when installed. So is just to make sure that. You know, you do indeed actually have. You know.
Knowledge and.
Right, right. Make, make sure that.
That'd be a possibility.
Right. And, and it may be also switching to a non-James Hardy product. We cannot tell you to use a certain brand or anything else. But I think that is the most sensitive thing here is to make sure that the, the reveal exposure is the, is the, the least it can be to make the effect. I think most of us have been in favor of like, there's a lot of wood siding on this house and we do understand the. The availability of new wood not to always be the best scenario. So I think your finding the commission is generally. You know, has been leaning towards support for the siding. I think we just have concern about the.
Profile.
Yeah, the, the five inch reveal issue.
I, uh, which I understand and. We've tried to address since the last meeting, the current reveal is just over two inches. We can't find anything.
Right. And I think staff is even saying if you can get somewhere to between three and four and.
Your money.
And we're, we're aware of the, the five and a quarter. Of fact, which is.
Which is the four inch exposure.
Which gives us four inch exposure. Our problem is quantity is we've. The contractor Columbus reclaimed is having trouble finding the quantity we would need of that for this project.
Is it just an issue with one? Source? Like, have you talked to other sources that could potentially find that product? And that's not really our purview, but I mean, that is a very common product. That, the, that reveal product from Hardy. So maybe, maybe there's shortages everywhere. I don't know.
He said that. He's talked to two suppliers and he would have to order from both to get.
Perfect.
To, I, my understanding was that still wouldn't be. Enough that we would then have a, a multi-week delay. To get a new. Delivery in. So we would be sitting, the, the project would stall for weeks, waiting for. Another delivery of it.
Even though we're very sympathetic to that, and I totally get it. You don't want to start this unless you can do it right with the material you need. To do it right is very important.
And, and we can only, yeah, we can only rule within our guidelines, which doesn't really address. Things of this. Nature. You know, this complexity, this is, this is a practicality of a means and methods issue and versus.
And we could approve it based on that condition so that that four inch reveal was there. So in the event that, that does come faster, but it would have to be within. Within the window of their certificate of appropriateness. So you have a little time. So I mean, we could kind of go that direction if that would help.
If it's also helpful, it may be possible for the siding contractor to install, you know, particular elevations, especially the worst ones at a time. So they're doing elevation by elevation if that's how the material's coming in. Or if there's other cementitious products, I know at least other commissions have previously approved LP smart siding, Boral, you know, we, we don't recommend any particular product, but there are other, other cementitious products that. The commission has seen before and has approved and supported.
And that, that's why I say, you know, I, you know, it seems like your, your heart is set by your contractor, at least on using Hardy. There are other products out there that do offer this. So.
If we could get. An approval for a four inch reveal. And then give us the freedom to try and source a, a product to fit that approval. That would be great. That would just stop.
Okay.
I'd not require us to come back and get.
Yeah.
I, I would, I would, I would, I would be okay with maybe entertaining that with the condition that. That staff receives and is able to approve your selected product than in the end, which manufacturer you're using.
Okay.
So that, that is documented.
Obviously, it wouldn't be withheld that if it's the suitable product, but if it's something wild, you know, that would be the off chance, but at that point you would have some freedom with staff.
Yeah, our goal is to.
Get it moving.
Well, get it moving, but also use quality material that is going to last for, you know, while. We live in this house.
I would love for you to go to. Jacqueline, page number ten, because I think I brought this up in the business meeting. I don't know that this, this nuance was picked up. Which is, you know, when I look around these windows, these trims, head sills, jams, all have a trim piece, right? And I don't think we see anything still in the packet that reflects what are you doing for all the trims? And documenting like, you know, the head, for example, has a little tiny overhang piece on it. You know, there's, there's some nuances here about how that. Trim looks and how it comes together. And I don't think there's anything in the documentation that actually reflects what you're putting back. After that siding is all gone.
We talk about the windows.
Around the windows, yeah, around the perimeter of the windows. And that reflects the dimensions that are there today and what will be put back and what those materials are. And apparently, you know, there's probably a little flashed head and those kinds of things. I don't think we have any details on that. And I did ask for that at the business meeting.
I think as long as it matched and it was notated. Then we're money. That it's wood, that it matches what's here.
Is, is that what the goal is to use wood then for your trims around the windows?
Exactly the same.
Like for like.
It's aesthetic, right?
Just know that I, I would like to see the documentation of that dimension of that head. You know, the head and the, and the jam.
Whatever.
Has a little overhang on it and stuff. And I, I just want to make sure that we don't get undersized trims coming back because that has been what has happened on other. Projects we've approved and they just didn't get, you know, all of a sudden the dimensions are not the same on the head or the jam after everything was taken off. And the contractor just puts whatever they want without milling it to the exact size of what's there today. And so for me, I still would love a follow up. Set of documentation that really says, you know, we're putting four inch or three and three quarter or three, or what, what is the dimension on the side? And then.
You got this.
What is the head?
We got it. He's got this. All right. Let's talk about the windows. That's the next thing, right?
Okay.
What's the condition on the windows? What we got going?
Have you had a chance to? Check some of these out?
We did.
You're the window expert. I love you guys.
I mean, for the initial review, all of them were replacements except for the two picture windows. That were on the front elevation and then side elevation on that corner. Correct?
One to ten maybe. Current condition as well. Overall.
So this particular one, and I think the staff brought it up. This replacement, you're replacing it, there are two windows, but you're replacing it with one window, right? With a little divider in the middle.
Are we talking about the, the first floor or the third floor?
The dormer.
The one that's.
The dormer, third floor.
Dormer.
We'll, we'll. Do two separate windows if that's.
Yes.
That's fine.
Yeah. And I think just so you understand the logic is that the middle piece, again, just like the detail for the windows, this middle piece has a dimension, a depth, you know, there's a three D profile to it. That's what we want to get at.
Would, would you consider on that one? And. You can do like for like, so you can put in what's here. So this is, this is suggested, not, not a requirement. Replacing them with two double hung, like the dormer in the back.
Yeah. There's such a just different character look on the front of your house. And it's sort of been short changed by those small windows being put in.
I, I, I understand. As we talked about previously, that we, that's a, that's a bathroom now. And so there is a need for some privacy at the, on the bottom part. And we are.
There are a few ways to screen that as well. So you can kind of keep the aesthetic. Exterior. And on the inside, you don't even know that that's there, but. Throw that in there.
Right.
But we can't require that anyway.
Right.
Because this is the condition and you're allowed to do like for like. I just, I was going to kind of bring it up because sometimes people will black out the. They'll black out the bottom window and they'll even do drywall underneath or on the inside. So. The inside. Appears to be a single window. But the outside gives you the original look, which should be a little bit more appropriate for the house, as long as you're doing all this work. That seems to be the sore thumb kind of sticking out there, especially being in front. But it's up to you.
Okay.
I, I guess if you decide to do it, staff would probably approve it.
We, yeah, we're. We are looking at a, a budget for all of this work as well, which we're.
Gotcha.
Of course.
It, it's fine. Otherwise, yeah, I, I support the. The, the siding and, and.
How does?
The box cutters for sure.
How, how does, how does the commission feel about the two original windows, large picture windows?
He, he's keeping those, right?
Keeping those.
No, so.
I'm sorry. I misunderstood.
We provided the.
Provided the.
Oh, that's right.
The new diagram. At the, at the last meeting, it was brought up that the, the diagram, the quote didn't quite look like it.
That is correct.
And so I asked for them to make sure that a diagram that correctly had the proportions.
Yep.
Okay, yeah.
So, so the question we have here, so this diagram indicates the window is fixed. And then it also brings up another question with the existing window. The transom sort of horizontal sash there is also fixed. You know, it has like this molyne piece in between and all that. So an option. The commission could consider is, you know, replacement of the operable lower sash, but retaining the transom portion. And then you would still keep this. Dimensions and you wouldn't have to worry about that.
You know. These are the two only original windows on the house and that becomes a weird mix and match and.
Trying to save a piece of one thing and, and it doesn't look right at all.
Yeah.
I mean, that, that makes sense. It's. They're saying that the rest of them are go, are going. Like here down.
Yeah. We'll do the whole thing still.
So that, I, I just summarizing where we're at right now, the applicant is willing to. Work with staff at this point on selecting. An appropriate reveal that's three to four inches in nature. Generally, it seems like there's support here for the smooth cement siding. There's a follow up to be done on trims. Uh, with staff that they could staff approve. And right now, I think everybody's okay with the windows as described and discussed with the modification. That were comprised, provided by the applicant. And the applicant has said that they would prefer to do like for like on the front of the house. Is there any other further questions here?
And box cutters, short of that, right?
I think that was boxers, they're not staff, staff approved and that's it.
Yeah, move to staff and we can, and we can staff approve repair or replacement with a drawing.
About color choices? Submit that to staff.
They're, they're in the packet, yeah.
Yeah, they're in the packet. And, and what color did you end up with on, on these? Now we had some discussion about not using white windows just because of. Sometimes replacement windows just stick out like a sore thumb, but. When they're white.
We, we did stick with the white windows that. But the, the trim should soften that. Contrast.
Their motion.
Before a motion is made, if I may just add a quick question to the applicant, but also just maybe verify with the commission. For this fixed window for the front, for the two historic windows, would the, the, I guess the transom molyne or sill, would that be removed? And this would just be put into its place as kind of a flat surface on this? Do you know by chance?
I, I'm sorry. I don't know what your terms are. I'm sorry, I I don't know what your terms are. The the window, it should be the exact same type of window that's in there now.
From what it appears with the window schedule, it does have a partition piece. But what is there currently is a transom window up top with a movable sash. So there's a decorative trim that is separating the two window sashes. So is all that going to be removed? And then this is just going to be put into that overall opening of that window?
Bring bring this picture up if you can. Or.
But there's there's a picture of the side one there that's pretty.
But the sideline's different, isn't it?
They're the same.
Okay.
We did just get these recently, so I just have that question about that.
Yeah, I I think.
What are questions is, I was kind of wondering this too. This piece right here.
Yes, sir.
Is that remaining? And then you're replacing this and this? Or is this entire piece
Yes.
Being removed? With a new unit.
Thank you. Yes, I'm sure, Henry. That's exactly what I'm asking.
Entire thing is being uh um redone as we removed.
And then this piece is being reproduced, and so that this piece across here is going to be like for like exactly.
Correct.
And.
With the same proportions, which is what we said.
This looked a little odd still by comparison uh to what was there. It looks like you go back to the photograph.
Sure.
Transom pulled forward.
This is a frame. It's like you got a trim these year.
I I think there's another photo in this packet, by the way, that shows uh.
There should be, yeah, I think.
You just pass it. Go up one more rate. So right there, now just slide down or slide over to the left there.
Because I believe from our site visit, yeah.
I think there's a concern that it's not wide enough.
Same same, I think same um comment that we had on the top dermer window, you know, the thickness, the vertical thickness. Here we're talking about horizontal thickness between the two glass panes. That's what we're talking about.
Pongs and matches.
Because you have the um the window sash itself, and then you have the mullion, and then you have the other sash.
And it's different tracks, so it gives that, it has that dimension. So that's just my.
I think it's, I think what you're gonna have to do is get to work with the manufacturer to provide a wider piece to really reflect this.
Based on what was said in the last meeting, what we verified was the overall size of the window is the same and the size of the two glass, the 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 window part of the window are the same.
Yes.
Dimensions. So I would assume that would mean that the piece between them is the same.
I know you're saying that, but you see the drawing, that piece looks very skinny. So we don't know if it means that they're putting a piece on top of it. And so I think your window company should know what you're talking about, and they should tell you what's what's going on there.
Be careful what you assume, and you might want to ask for a profile of what that's gonna be.
Okay.
I would be okay if we delegated that to staff.
Yeah.
That getting resolved, though.
Yeah.
So as to not have to come back to this body.
Right.
That is the the level of detail, though, that we're looking for is like, that's the specificity, right?
Okay.
That's the importance. And when we talk about the trim, you know, as you're looking at the window, that's also important that you're matching those dimensions, right?
And and that's an unusual request for a window company.
Okay.
That's not, that's pretty normal thing.
Ready for a motion?
Take a stab.
Yeah.
Want to do it?
This is the uh.
Number four.
Number four. Okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve COA twenty five oh one two one nine fifteen thirty Bryden Road. With the stipulation, the applicant works with staff to confirm the selection the um siding product with the appropriate reveal. And with the availability of whatever manufacturer that that's worked through with staff. Um, also with stipulation, the applicant works with staff on the two replacement windows that the dimensions of the frames are accurate and match the existing condition. And also work with staff on the trim that is going to be replaced around the windows and provide dimension drawings of existing conditions and show that the new condition will match.
I'll second that.
Having an emotion in a second, is there any further discussion, including any clarification from staff?
Nope, I think we're all good.
I do want to just make a helpful note for the applicant. Uh, the trim around the two picture windows do appear to be original trim to the property. So it would have the dimensions that you might be looking for, just to help for that drawing, trim detailing to be sent to staff.
Okay.
Yeah, so just a, it's nice when that's there.
Any other further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. So all those in favor say aye. Extension, motion passes. Just work with Jaclyn and Morgan to just finish your packet up.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. It looks like case number five was moved to staff approval, so we're on to case number six, four oh four, four oh six, East Eleventh Avenue. If you can both raise your right hands, do each swear to tell the truth in the in your testimony for the commission this evening.
I do.
Yes.
If you could state your full name and association with the property for record.
Chris Perry, owner.
Okay.
I'm Jim Salt. I prepared the application, drawings and photos.
Great, thank you. Back one more.
Okay, this application for four four, four oh six, East Eleventh Ave is proposing to add six hundred and twenty five square feet of parking area to the existing one thousand one hundred and sixty square foot parking area. The new parking area would be located to the south of the existing parking area. And application for parking was previously reviewed conceptually in November of twenty twenty four. At the November twenty twenty five business meeting, the commission had asked to clarify if the actual landscape area will be extended to accommodate the parking or if the intent is to make the existing gravel parking area official. And then city staff had recommended submitting any additional current photos to better show the overall parking area site. The commission had asked whether any variances were needed for the proposal, noting that if variances are needed, the specific variance language will need to be included for the commission to be able to provide the formal recommendation. Following business meeting feedback, the applicant has submitted additional photos. Uh, and then building and zoning noted that a variance will be needed to allow gravel surface and that a variance for substandard maneuvering room will need to be added as well. Um, however, building zoning noted there may be additional variances needed, but clarified that this cannot be determined until some additional information requested by building and zoning is provided by the applicant. Um, so pending that's building and zoning confirmation of what variances or requirements may be needed, staff does recommend continuing application, COA two five zero one one zero nine at four four, four oh six, East Eleventh Avenue in the new Indianola Historic District. To all the applicant time to complete their application for building and zoning department and confirm any all requirements or variances they may be needed and any variances that may be recommended by the HRC. The basis for the staff recommendation is the city code three one six point one three, standard for site improvements, specifically letter A. Thank you.
Is there anything I'd like to add? I know there's a um, you know, suggestion from staff to just continue it. I think we've had some questions uh as a commission, so I'd actually like to hear a little bit, if you don't mind. Uh, just to get our questions out of the way, learn a little bit more about this. So I I would open it, this up to you first before we.
Yeah, however, to expedite this, whatever is, you know, the best, if you want to start with questions, or I can talk a little bit about it first.
Well, yeah, why why don't you tell us a little bit about it?
Okay, well, uh, there's been some misunderstanding. The the way this got started was uh, there was an inquiry from someone from zoning who had found a photograph of this property dating back to prior to Chris Perry's purchase of the property. And there was a gravel parking area in place that accommodated three vehicles in terms of the width of it. Well, the requirement is for six spaces. You could get six cars in there, but they had to stack behind each other, which then the stacked cars were in the required setback, which is a violation. So in order to get six vehicles in there, it needed to be extended to the south with some additional gravel. So that's what he did when he purchased the property, and it was like that for about a dozen years. And we actually had a a a meeting with the Historic Commission back then. This is when Randy Black was uh the director of the Historic Preservation Office. We thought we had gotten everything approved, apparently not, because zoning didn't have a record of it. So that's why we're here now, just trying to get this existing parking area that's been in existence made official and recognized by zoning as being in compliance. The problem is, it can't really be in compliance without without some variances. Uh, and that's because there was a garage, you know, decades ago. Our ancestors in their wisdom decided to split this lot in two and build a a garage on the on on a new parcel on the back that occupies the entire parcel. The the setback from the property line to the building is not more than twelve inches, if that. And so it creates a problem where all of the buildings to the west of us have ample parking off of the alley. We don't have access to the alley. We can't get parking off of the alley. It has to come off of Grant. And and so the current arrangement, it works. Zoning has some issues. Well, first one is the gravel. And here's the issue with that. We have this large old maple tree that's in good health, three foot in diameter that provides shade to the parking area and the building. And in this day and age, climate change and hot summers and and drought, you know, it, the gravel allows water to percolate down through into the soil and keep that a healthy tree. Second issue they had was maneuvering. Now, with the ten foot setback, the property line is a few feet off of the pavement. So we've got more than ten feet, about twelve, thirteen feet for maneuvering vehicles. And it's what everybody does because of the garage. You don't want to back out into Grant Street because traffic traveling east on Chittenden turns right, coming down Grant heading south, and there's a traffic light there. And if it's changing from yellow, I mean, from green to yellow, they speed up. And so you, everybody has the ability to back your vehicle in in such a manner that they can be moving in a forward direction as they come out onto Grant Street. The, so the maneuvering issue is really one that is solved. The other issue is um, the code calls for a maximum distance of twenty, twenty five feet for curb cut. We don't have a curb, but the issue is what the the approach into the parking area. We exceed that by about eight feet, but we need all of that width for the maneuvering in order for the vehicles to maneuver and be able to be entering Grant Street in a forward motion. So I'm in the middle of preparing documents to address these issues that zoning has. They have a bunch of other questions, too, that they've sent me, a lot of which have to do with, frankly, you know, parking areas. I I'm reading through this, and it's like we're we're building some multi multi story unit, and we're not, you know, we're just dealing with an existing parking area. So there's some confusion here that needs to be kind of cleared up. They were just trying to get this existing situation made made official. It works nowadays. It's not, you know, it's not ideal, and it's never going to be ideal. It is what it is, and there's really we've done the best we can, you know, to to provide the six required parking spaces and make it a safe parking area for the tenants. There is no off street parking nearby. The 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 nearest on on street parking on Eleventh Avenue is about a football field, you know, three hundred feet uh to the west. There's no off street parking on North Grant, north of, I mean, north of Eleventh. It's south of Eleventh. There's a fire hydrant and curb cuts. You've got to travel some distance uh south of Eleventh on Grant Avenue before you can get any to any on street parking. And the residents who live there are using that on street parking, so.
What's uh stipulating the six parking spaces?
Pardon me?
What's stipulating the six parking spaces?
That's the code. We have, it's it's a four unit building, and we're required to to provide one and a half space for each unit.
Was it originally constructed as a four unit or was it a single family?
It was originally a double converted to four units long before we took possession.
Okay.
I took possession. It has eight bedrooms. Each unit has two bedrooms. And it's a, an area of young adults. It's worth mentioning that this is a segment of Eleventh Ave that uh begins just west of the fairgrounds where you pass under the rear underpass and it and Wagenbrenner uh took most of that stretch of Eleventh. Uh, heading toward campus or toward Fourth Street was all section eight housing uh for decades until about a ten, fifteen years ago, when Wagenbrenner got possession of it and it got declassified as section eight. And they did extensive renovations to all their buildings, including ones directly west of mine. And the city allowed them to remove all the vegetation and grass and extend their parking areas basically all the way to the back of their buildings uh so that, you know, they could put dozens of parking spaces. But of course, since that garage is behind us, we have no access to the alley off of our lot. We can't even put our trash on the alley because it's not our land. We have to put our trash in the front. And it's kind of the gateway to that stretch of real estate.
Do you own the garage?
No, I don't. I tried to get it, but the owner of the trolley complex, which is on the opposite side of Grant, got it before I was able to. And if you look at, for example, the photo, that's the small photo with all the green in it, that shows the if you look up, you know, to the west, that, you know, the building, my building's the gray one with the red ridge cap. The the orange uh roofed building and the ones further up in the photo, those grassy areas behind them are all gone now. That's all paved with black tile. All the way down the block, there's probably eight or ten of those buildings. You know, and so there's, oh, we're, we, I don't really want asphalt. I I just want gravel. I want to minimize, I think asphalt really makes it look like a parking lot. I we, I. Gravel's a little. Agree with you, i- i- in fact, we've been promoting permeable surfaces. Uh, and and so I, and I I really commend you for keeping that tree and for allowing that because that really, I think, makes the site uh much nicer, the parking much nicer and everything else. We we, I I I guess where I'm at at least is is, my question is, what do you need?
What we need is to maximize our parking with little vacant land that we have.
Right, but but what do you need from us?
Yeah.
We need a COA.
Yeah, we need a COA.
Zoning's asking for that.
Yeah, so I was under the impression that we had to get approval from you before we we get approval from them. Apparently, that's you just, you you make a recommendation, I, you know. If if you want to make some kind of recommendation now, that's fine. We're gonna be, we're gonna be dealing with zoning, yes.
I I I mean, quite frankly, in this thing, I know BZA doesn't like gravel, but in my opinion, it's the most reversible thing they've got.
I agree.
Easily scooped up, taken away. It's not harming the the building, the context, the grading, the landscaping. They're actually doing a benefit here. I hear their hardship. I think we take the ball and we simply recommend approval.
Yeah.
And then the applicant will have to go and get their variances and come back to us to support that. But then that may be a matter of just getting a variance letter and approval, once you have that list of variances. But from a conceptual standpoint, I think this is, this is very much here, and we're all sort of saying like, yeah, this makes sense.
Yeah.
So I I think it would be okay if we, as a commission, proceeded by actually recommending approval of this application as has been presented. I would feel very comfortable in that that scenario.
And just to clarify, what we're recommending is the existing condition.
Exactly the packet. They've got a good good drawing, they've got some photos, and they've prevented a hardship case of why they have what they have.
And there are no alterations that you're taking.
No, it's it's been like this for a dozen years, there's no plan to change it. Yeah.
Right, and 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 then they may tell you you need variations, and then you'll have to come back so we can recommend those, but we don't know what they are, neither do you.
They can come back for the variance.
Later.
So we we don't approve variances, we only recommend recommendation on them. So once you have those things ironed out, I I I mean, there have been scenarios where people have had to come back.
Yeah, I I've looked at the the deadlines and so forth. We're looking, talking like January, February, you know, before we will be getting any kind of BZA.
But at least BZA or or Building and Zoning Services here would understand that we we are supporting this. So I think this is a potentially supporting, depending on people vote, which would be a good thing for you to.
That's great. Yeah, that's, thank you, yeah.
All right, I'd like to make a motion for COA two four zero zero four seven four for four oh four to four oh six, East Eleventh Avenue, as submitted conditionally on variances and approval of variances.
I'll second that.
Just to clarify, this is a recommendation for our approval.
This is not a recommendation, this is an approval.
It is an approval.
You're saying conditioned on them obtaining.
Yeah.
The variances, the variances, make it legal.
Any further clarification? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, extension, motion passes.
Thank you.
And then just work with staff. When you have your your list of your technical things, you'll come back. You'll need to get a support letter on that matter. Hopefully, we can. you'll come back. You'll need to get a support letter on that matter. Hopefully we can help expedite that as long as it's not changing anything any further.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck.
Moving on to. Nine.
It is.
We are moving on to then case number nine. Before we jump to case number nine, is there anything you want to talk about with case number eight that was withdrawn, by the way?
Yeah, so the applicant wasn't able to attend in person on this date. So they asked if they could table it and come to a future hearing.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, then moving on to case number nine, 517 Park Street.
Good evening.
If you could raise your right hand, do you swear to tell the truth in your testimony before the commission this evening?
I do.
If state your full name and association with the property for record?
Sorry.
State your full name and association with the property.
Nick Fioka, representative of the owner and contractor.
Okay. And if you could state what owner being and the contractor being?
My owner is Chris Corso.
Okay.
Contractor, ultimate outdoor.
Thank you. Jacklin?
Okay, this application for 517 Park Street is proposing to install an aluminum pergola and six columns on the balcony. Let me switch over to my actual staff report over here. Got the agenda up. Here we go. Okay, so this property was built in, well, the modern part was built in 2020. So staff initially reached out to request the applicant submit some additional information to clarify how the pergola will be connected and attached to the existing roof system and that rooftop area. And staff has asked that the applicant submit an elevation drawing showing the balcony roof extension in context with the building itself, as well as to include any further information on how the columns will attach to the current railing system, since that was depicted in the renderings that have been provided. At the November business meeting, the commission requested the applicant submit renderings looking up from the street level, noting this will be an important piece and some views from further down the street or across the street. The commission requested a drawing or rendering to show the entire facade. The commission noted that conceptually, they do not object to the proposal, particularly if the facade is set back from the historic facades, but will need to make sure the addition will look right on the building. The commission also asked for more clarifying photos. The applicant has submitted revised 3D renderings of the pergola where it appears the columns will be installed outside of the existing railing. Staff recommends information be included on how the pergola will be fastened and connected to the balcony area. And staff recommends the requested elevation drawing or slash context rendering be submitted. Their recommendation is to continue application COA 2501186517 Park Street in the North Market Historic District to allow the applicant time to provide those drawing details requested by the commission HBO staff. The basis for the staff recommendation is the City Code 3116.11 Standards for Alteration, specifically numbers nine, 10, and 12, and then the guidelines regarding rooftop structures and spaces, canopies, and awnings. And with that, I'll turn over to the commission.
Is there anything the app?
It's where I remember.
Yes.
You do.
Is there anything the applicant would like to add before we?
So I mean, just, I guess, assuming you guys have found what you're requesting in terms of, I believe, the main requests that were pending were obviously the attachment details and then some distant elevation views, more so from a. And.
Yeah, like when this project was approved, you know, we had an elevation at the hotel. That showed everything.
Right.
It just, this doesn't, I think, we wanted to make sure that we could understand what it looked like, I think on the elevation is the larger.
Right. The quasi-interior shots are of no relevance to us whatsoever. We don't care what it looks like sitting in it looking out.
Correct.
We need to see.
They're, they're.
I mean, I need to know what it looks like from someone walking by it.
Right. To my knowledge, some additional additional items were sent or uploaded. So I guess we need to clarify if you have that.
We do not.
So it.
I mean, I have the videos and the elevation, some additional elevation. If you want to see them here on this iPad, but if that's not.
Unfortunately, we, you know, some of those materials need to be submitted to staff. I mean, I, I think conceptually during the business meeting, our thing was is we didn't object to this. We just needed to see the rest of the information. And it would be good to see the attachment method, like, you know, when you scroll down, Jacklin, for a moment. Go, sorry, the other way, if you can go slide down.
They're going into that beam. That is the structural beam that is.
Keep going down. So there's this glass handrail. Keep going. One more, I think. Well, we've been one more beyond that. So you got this glass handrail and you've got this handrail that looks like stainless steel or something. And these tubes are just coming up off of it. Is that really how that's going to go together?
Well, if you, that's not the best depiction of it. It's the one up above that.
So that's the thing is we need to see what you're actually.
Well, that one right there, so that the, the columns will be coming down on the outside of the existing railing into, there's a, there's a shroud that is, is covered by cladding, a cladding enclosure that is the actual main structural beam of the building. So.
So it'll come in front of the railing?
Steel beam, yeah. It'll come on the outside.
The outside of the railing?
Yes.
Outermost.
Yes.
Okay, so I think that, like, that's part of the disconnect. We need renderings that show really what it's going to be.
Or a little bit of mind drawings, whatever.
Right.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be mind drawing, something, sections.
Yeah, drawings that will show really what you're going to build and how you're going to attach.
Do you have?
Conceptually, I think we're all there on what this generally is.
Have you guys?
You just need to see specific.
Right. And this, this may not suffice in terms of what you're referencing because I was informed that the additional elevation renderings and videos were sent. So obviously, if that's not the case, that's, you know, I'm not very happy about that. But have you actually seen the engineered drawings and the plans for for the system? And if that answers?
There's, there's product cut sheets, yes, but that doesn't really show us how it attaches to the building and how it looks across the building. So, you know, it may be as simple as the architect, I mean, several of us actually were on this commission when this, when this project came through originally. Get the original architectural elevation, add this on there.
Yep.
Show us the architectural attachment where it's attaching, that it's now in front of the railing because what's in this packet doesn't show it in front of the railing. In fact, it shows attaching on the top of the railing.
Or take a picture of the building and use Photoshop, put it on there. I mean, just.
Yeah, I mean, no, I mean, you know, the rendering shouldn't be, the rendering shouldn't be an issue. So, yeah.
We just, we can't, we can't be wishy-washy on those things because then the inspectors have nothing to.
I was at the business meeting, so the fact, everything that you're wanting should have been submitted. So, and apparently it was.
I make a motion to continue.
Yeah.
A second.
Any further discussion?
I will be back.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extention motion passes.
Thank you. See you soon.
Thank you. Moving on to the next case here.
Right, right.
So same property, just a different proposal, different applicant.
If you could both raise your right hands, do you swear to tell the truth in your testimony before the commission this evening? If you could state your full name and association with the property for record?
I'm Nelson Kinz, president of One Hospitality.
Okay.
I'm Nick Munoz with Myers and Associates Architects, designer, project manager for the project.
Should talk to that guy about.
We were just talking about that.
Nick was here a long time ago.
Okay.
Okay, this application for 511 Park Street or 511 517 Park Street is a conceptual application proposing to install five awnings over storefront doors on Park and Spruce Streets and to install a marquee structure on the facade of the former 533 South Park Street building. The marquee would have lighting along the face in addition to bulb lighting, install internally illuminated wall sign on the proposed marquee structure, to install signs on the awnings, to install the blade sign at the southeast corner, install window graphics, and to repaint the ground level walls per the submitted materials. This property is also part of the AC Hotel construction design. At the November business meeting, the commission noted that the existing building facades are somewhat of a quasi-prairie commercial style or as close as Columbus got to that style. The proposed style of the awnings, they noted, are out of character with the architectural style of the buildings. The commission noted that they support having a street presence and having doors opening up from the street and allowing people to go in and out of the building without having to go through the lobby is a plus and helping to activate the street stamps. So a lot of good things are going on with the plan. The commission suggested looking into awnings that would have been more used with the style of building and that fit the architecture. The commission noted while a blade sign probably would not have come out of the building at a 45-degree angle historically, can probably get behind this. The commission asked about the blade sign shape, whether the applicant has considered a more rectangular shape for the blade sign to go with the building as currently the shape comes across as somewhat at odds with the rest of the building. The commission noted they could potentially support a larger rectangle blade sign and higher height, given the scale of the building. The commissioners noted that if the marquee proposal detail is executed well, feel this will add nice character to what would have been a retail fit originally and noted that it has some finite details with the many bulbs and will want to confirm the bulb lighting is static versus dynamic or flashing lighting. The commission noted they can see the facade fairly far out from Park Street and so the end corner portion of the block feels like a strong corner that the marquee will help add to. The commission expressed concern regarding the opaque window graphics, blocking out windows, removing depth, and asked if that was intended to be temporary or a permanent sign. The commission noted they would not, they would likely not be able to support blocking the glazing or glass with large areas of opaqueness added. The HBO staff recommends applicant revise the proposed awning design to be a flat slope triangular awning to be more in line with the Columbus Register Historic Property Architectural Guidelines. This is a conceptual application, so the commission should offer design feedback that can be utilized by the applicant to further refine the proposal for review at a future HRC meeting, and so no action is required. The basis for the staff recommendation is the City Code 3116.11 Standards for Alteration, specifically numbers 3, 5, 9, 10, and 12, and then the guidelines regarding storefronts, awnings, canopies, and general guidelines regarding signage and awnings and window sign guidelines. Thank you.
What would the applicant like to add before we open up to the commission for discussion?
Uh, yeah, thanks. Thanks for having us sit here.
And maybe it'd be best to, you almost have two pieces here, almost two applications. I think it's good to talk about each one in to themselves because it's kind of like two, two buildings almost.
Right.
Thought they were two buildings. And if you need to approach, I will let you do that too as well, just because I think that's best described as you're talking.
Yeah. Well, like, I think as you mentioned in the last case, we spent a lot of time together in 18, 19, 20, getting the building proved. I think it came out really well. I think it was a great, a great final resolution to incorporate these historic storefronts into the property, which was ultimately the result of our discussions with the HRC. So that was great. Since that time, these tenant spaces have been empty. They haven't had a tenant in.
I know.
Five.
Noticeably, they've sort of been in a little bit even in disrepair.
Yeah. So, current tenant, Justin, One Hospitality, Corso. We've, we've got permits. We've got permits and construction underway on the interior on Spruce, which is the corner, the corner bar lounge at Park and Spruce. And then we're well, kind of well into drawings on the interior of Sorella, which is the yellow building and the north building and the patio to the north of that. So really, the intent and the goal with, with Spruce on the corner building is to, you know, try to come up with some kind of exterior treatment that, that sets it apart, differentiates it a little bit from the rest of the neighborhood. And, you know, we felt like in these, these modern, these are really kind of modern, modernized openings within the kind of overall structure of the building. So that's why we came up with a kind of bonding proposal. Signage is, is it a piece that we're representing conceptually here? But we felt like a corner sign, it's a good option there. There's a sign kind of two bays down for Astra, which I think you probably had in review in the past few months. That's the elevator up to the rooftop. That's, that's really kind of all we're doing on the corner. Everything, all the glass, all the windows and doors, they're all there in place. So our proposal here is really. Yep. And then around the northeast corner, it's a really unique existing condition there where the storefront, the storefront has a set of, it's really three doors. There's two, two single doors and one pair of doors. And it wraps the corner. So the idea there is to kind of bring that marquee around the corner as well for addressing traffic as it's coming down Park Street.
And then I can speak to the opaqueness of those windows. That is where we are planning to put the restrooms for that space. They were there at one point in time back in the Park Street patio days. So they're going to go back in that space. So that was why we were trying to block out those windows.
Generally, the commission, so, you know, digesting these things is two separate things. I, I think a lot of people said, oh, this looks great. You're doing this little marquee thing. We want some clarity on the bulbs and, and, you know, and the entrances and the proportions kind of felt right. It fell apart for us at the glazing component. Is there any way you could at least do, you know, I don't know. You could do it, you could do a film on it and then step off of that and that, or, you know. Yeah, step back off of it, create a light box or just create a box that just sets back off the glass. And then, you know, so it doesn't feel like a harsh, solid thing, but reads some translucent, you know. Has some ability to give you the program inside, the bathroom, we get that. But maybe, you know, you, it just helps on the read on the outside of, I'm still a window and I'm not a covered over wall.
If you look at the floor plans, there's a corridor that goes around to the back of the, around the restrooms. Can you just push those restrooms further over and that would give you your little hallway going in front?
Yeah, I think that in our discussions previously, we talked about giving a little bit of space there for those windows to kind of do whether it's a lighting element or something in those windows. To your point, remind people that it is in fact a window. So yes, almost a shadow box for, I guess.
Or even create a display box scenario. I mean, you know.
Beneficial. Yeah, I. Marketing.
Yeah, yeah, it's a marketing opportunity. You leave a two-foot little shelf in there that you could slide something in, pull something back out. You know, anything we can do to help encourage this thing really look like a storefront still is really.
We did, we actually did something similar on the eighth floor of the hotel. There's, it's essentially like windows, curtain wall from end to end. And there's a closet in there and we kind of built like a little bit of a two-foot box in but some lighting so that the exterior appearance of the window would match everything else. So I know it looks consistent.
Okay. We'd just ask if you would consider that in a revision on this.
The thing, I think.
A lot of this was, was the right elements on this piece.
Okay, good. I think the only thing just to mention is there's a, there's about a three, three to four foot difference between the back and the front. So there's a staircase and a landing that have to fit there. So pushing the bathroom back into the back corner is probably not, not going to work, but I think we can definitely make room.
But you can maybe pull it off 12, 18 inches or something.
Yeah.
Okay. And then clarify for us the lights on the marquee, chasing, fixed, static, not color changing, static, white.
I don't see any reason.
Throw an LED.
Not a color scenario, just white.
We've been leaning towards like amber colored bulbs.
Okay.
Just want to give it a little bit of a presence. I don't want it to look like a Vegas strip or anything like that. Yeah.
Okay. So now let's switch to the other side of the building. We probably got past the easy.
Why, why the shape on the, on the sign?
I think that we were looking to go with something that felt a little more vintage, but also felt a little more sports-centric. Kind of in our research and some of the designs we looked at to model this after. This was kind of a repeat design we saw. We just wanted something a little bit different that we thought would stick out just to draw some more attention to that space, knowing that we weren't going to have a large sign on that corner. We were hoping that the awnings would kind of bring some attention to that corner.
The, the blade sign just seems a little disproportionate and a little kind of.
The blade sign, conceptually, I think we can throw out entirely. Just, we are, we're open to some other options, whether that just be signage on the.
Is it that it felt too small even?
Yeah.
Ironically, it's maybe a case where we actually felt like, hey, if you were going to be a blade of the era.
Yeah, you wouldn't be this little tiny.
Yeah, like own it.
Thing.
Totally.
In a shield's shape. Because there's nothing. There's nothing about this building that says, let's have a little crest. There's nothing about this building that says, let's have a little crest here, a little shield.
Yeah.
Of some sort. The, the building. Yeah, is sort of a prairie style building. Um, and that shape would never be used on a prairie style building. So, you know, we're almost thinking that if you're going to do a blade sign, maybe it should be bigger, maybe it should be more designed to it, maybe it should be.
Make it a true blade.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Make it think, you know, what would Frank Larry Wright make if he was going to make a sign there and, you know, make, you can make it interesting. Uh, and make it appropriate. The other thing, those, those awnings is.
I think we were struggling with all the rounding, right?
Yeah.
Did you consider barrel?
I think some of the elements on the inside as well, um, the center bar is round. Kind of. We're going with round tables. We're doing like, um.
Theme.
Yeah, we're doing like a, the bars being round. We were going to do like a track on the floor around the bar in tile. Uh, so we were just kind of playing off that rounded.
Eighties.
Sports round.
I get you. Also trying to pull that space as its own space, right? You're trying to differentiate it from the rest of the building.
It's very important to me that all these spaces don't feel like they're.
They're all one big building.
Part of a hotel.
On the, on the outside, it doesn't seem to match with the building style. That's, it just looks out of place.
Is it that those rounded awnings are slightly oversized, so they cover the corners of the square windows below them or behind them? Is that?
Yeah, with the, so those windows all slide fully open. So you can, up front, inside, outside. So the idea was that they would stick out a little bit so you could have a table right there if you wanted, and it would still be.
Right. I, we, I. I'm not against.
Yeah.
The awning or the awnings sticking out or, and, and I love the idea that you're opening up to the street. Uh, yeah, because the, if you remember the very original design for the hotel, you're putting the back of the hotel there. And my, one of my objections was that's a street, be part of the street or don't be part of the street. And so I really applaud the fact that you are part of the street and everything else. It's just, I think the kind of nineteen eighties round barrel awnings.
What do you think about making them squared up? Just square?
Yeah, or, or, or even thinking about coming out traditionally.
We're good with it.
But, but are you, sorry, are you talking about in elevation or in section square?
I think all of it. Square lines matches the building. That's it.
Yeah.
Frame lines.
They get the track.
Yeah, and, um.
Well, but you've got to work.
And maybe it comes out from, from between the transom and the, and the main window, you know. Uh, and maybe it's a real design element.
I think it just comes out crisp.
Yeah, I think it just feels like a square edged building. It's everything.
I mean.
But I see your question.
It could be a, a straight piece that comes out that's more substantial even, or it can be, you know, the angle that comes down.
Be any of that. So you guys should design it and think about it.
On a flat edge, do you think?
This, but, but there's nothing, yeah, there's nothing about curves on this building.
I just think that, I think both in section and elevation, the commission is just sort of currently.
Yeah.
Yeah. Struggling with the round.
Throw another drawing in it and we'll see. Yeah, four other renderings that we put together. This is just what Chris was really pushing for and wanted to push this in front. So we do have some that are more.
Yeah, let them know our feedbacks. So you have some backing for the other drawings.
Another, sorry, one other question about extents of awning.
What do you, what is the position on being outside of the opening or being within the opening?
Depends with the design.
I mean, I don't want it to cut the opening. You don't want it to look weird. So I think you covered or you don't cover it.
Yeah, I think what you're asking is setback within the opening attached to the storefront or sort of being forward and on the outside wall, just slightly proud of the opening, you know. I, I think it just comes down to you show us the details of what.
I, I don't know if you could service the cleaning and windows and all that, if you got that all jammed in there.
Right.
Be a mess.
And it would be good if you do entertain, by the way, the idea of, you know, some sort of blade or something is to also think about how your signage actually might go. Cause I think this is a concept that has to sort of go with your branding and your signage a little bit.
That's a good idea.
So you might, you might want to engage that graphics person and signage person now to kind of come up with that, that nice, niceties of it and just get it all wrapped into one.
Absolutely. We have probably forty different designs for a blade sign. Uh, yeah, we haven't picked a direction yet, so I didn't want to put anything for you with that. Um, I'm sad it's not. I think that I completely agree. I think something more prominent needs to be there. Um, but you mentioned maybe not on the corner of the building.
I, I think there, I think there was a question of why it had to be set at the forty-five.
Yeah.
Angle versus blades were typically on one elevation or on the other elevation or.
Yeah. If, if we look at a place and sending up in second, third story. Need to, need to be kind of in the twenty-five square foot.
Definitely above twelve feet though.
I, I think one of the things we're willing to look at is exception based on it looking appropriate to the building.
And we, and we've done that before.
Because when you're too small, it looks insignificant and you go, what is?
It looks out of proportion, yeah.
Yeah.
Just out of proportion. So.
This is a really unique building because you've got the initial facade, which is sort of also enveloped and developed with the bigger piece. So you gotta.
And what I would maybe ask is that if you're going to entertain that idea of the blade with having a very prominent name, you probably don't need the name repeated fifteen other times on awnings and everywhere else. Maybe it's a logo or an identity or a theme or a motif, but maybe you don't need the literal name put everywhere plastered on things.
So just don't take what we just told you to the end.
Yeah.
And what we need.
That's what I'm saying.
No, I, I completely understand. I think that it'll, uh, it'll be filled with, with this conversation.
Yeah, that's a, I think that's a really good, uh, opportunity.
We've had some people just come forward and they want to put their name on everything. It's like, well, once you've arrived there, because you saw the, the main sign, you don't need it on every single other thing, you know.
Are we aligned on the color? Are we okay with navy blue?
Yeah.
For, for what? For the?
For the awning material.
The awning. I, I, I think it's going to depend on, on the design that you come up with. You know, you, 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 you might want to match the, the, uh, the, the overhang on the roof. I don't know. You might want to, whatever. But, you know, I think we're looking for something that's a real kind of a design element that goes with the prairie style of the building to, to enhance that rather than trying to detract from it. And to make it look like it's some other style. Cause that was one of the things as to why this building was important historically. Um, and so I think you want to look in terms of, you know, green and green. You want to look at prairie's architecture and see how would that work? And personally, I, you know, if you could, if you can justify design wise, the, how far the awning needs to come out. That's not an issue or where it lands on the window. Again, that all relates to what your design is.
The question with the color, I think, uh, at least in this one, it looked like you're matching it with the.
Yeah, it looks like it matches.
Matches, but that's not what you're proposing because, yeah.
Right.
But that, that, that looks nice and it's, but it's misleading. So maybe think about that as you pick the color.
Right. And, and, and it doesn't even, I mean, it doesn't have to match. I mean.
Is it? Yeah.
You could be a case for, for, for red.
Yeah.
You know, and, and, and to say, this is a, an accident piece of going across, and this is why it works with that style of a building. So, you know.
Yeah, you can show us options. Right now it looks like it's matching.
Right, but it doesn't have to. I mean.
No.
I think what we're saying is we want a design that works appropriate for the building. And we're willing to, to even make exceptions as we have in the past. Where we've said, partially, this needs to be, we agree.
I would, I would take that one step further though, which is, you know, the buildings prior to the hotel, you know, the buildings are always the buildings and the tenant storefronts have always been the tenant storefronts. I look for more of a cohesive identity for the tenant storefront than I do for the building. I think it can be okay, but I think it contrasts too. Cause, you know, tenant storefronts came and went all the time and the awnings changed all the time and the signs changed all the time.
And it's a, not a temporary, it's a very rare temporary thing. It's eight, ten years and then you're either.
Yeah, then you're replacing the canvas and the awning and the.
So this is not like we're, it's not a permanent thing.
Okay.
Is that enough? I think so.
Yeah.
We'll see in two weeks.
Motion to continue then?
But it's a conceptual.
Oh, this is conceptual?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, then we will see you now with your next iteration.
All right. Thanks so much for your time. Have a safe mind.
And then it looks like, uh, case number thirteen has been withdrawn.
Case number thirteen has, yes. Um, number thirteen, they, uh, after the business feedback asked for, um, if they could be withdrawn or tabled for a little bit to, a little bit more time to work with their design and then they're going to plan to come back.
And then is there, there's two people here still, so are those items of old business?
Eleven and twelve. Um, so the next one would be eight, six, five, Bryan Road.
Okay. Sorry, my agenda is doing something really.
That's kind of strange. I'm like.
Do you raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth in test, in your testimony for the commission this evening?
I do.
State your full name and association for property for record.
Kyle Cochran, and I'm the contractor.
Okay. And you're with who's what?
RAS Construction.
Thank you. Jack.
Okay, so this is a conceptual application for eight, six, five, Bryan Road. Um, the proposal is, uh, a single brick car, brick garage from around nineteen teens was demolished due to fire. Uh, and the proposal here today is to construct a new twenty-six by twenty-four, one and a half story carriage house per this many materials. And then the subject property includes a two and a half story circuit eighteen nineties brick residence. And then the nineteen ten single car brick garage, um, previously included that as well. The garage originally was sheltered with a pyramidal slate roof that was replaced with approved shingles by twenty fourteen. Based atlases and Sanborn mapping show a one and a half story wood framed carriage house was present in eighteen ninety-nine through nineteen ten. And then either replaced by or before nineteen twenty with that brick garage, um, that unfortunately had the fire. At the November business meeting, the commission noted that they can support a larger accessory structures, particularly as there are some homes in the area that have bigger accessory structures. The commission noted that they are not able to support the sliding barn doors being out of character for garages in this district. But may be able to support hinge version as some garages in the district historically had hinge paired doors. The commission noted that the south elevation fits more in the period, but the north elevation is less appropriate in the district context. Um, the commission suggested leaning away from an agrarian style and it may be best to simplify without a cupola, but can discuss further at the hearing. The commission asked that the applicant include context images of garages similar to the proposed garage in the district. The commission noted it will be important that the garage ties to the house in detail such as the roof slopes. And that the original garage had scalloped slate, so it would be a positive if the applicant could use scalloped slate asphalt for the new garage. Uh, and the commission asked that the applicant include photos of the house itself. The commission asked that the applicant can submit current photos of the site as it appears now and asked if there would be any site improvements as part of the garage instruction. The commission noted that they will need a site plan. The commission noted that the applicant will want to run a site plan by the building zoning department, as there could be vision triangles or other variances the applicant may need due to the alley condition and being on the side street. Um, this is a conceptual application, so the commission should offer design feedback that can be utilized by the applicant for the refined proposal for review to a future HRC meeting and so no action is required. And I do want to note that the applicant submitted some additional photos today. Unfortunately, not in time for us to be able to add it, um, but just wanted to include that information. And the staff recommendation is based on the city code three one one six point one two standards for new construction. And then the guidelines regarding garages and outbuildings. Thank you.
So, uh, well, uh, conceptual design, I think you got some of the feedback, you know, I, summarizing kind of the business meeting. You know, the, the alleyway facing elevation, which is the bottom elevation. So for everybody's clarity, this garage is opening on two sides. That bottom elevation, we thought those doors were more appropriate.
Okay.
Then the, the, there was a proposal for sort of a hinge.
No, I think actually, sorry, I, I think it's, it's supposed to be flipped the other way. So the, uh, the bottom design is what actually faces the house and the top design.
Okay.
Is what.
Well, those simpler bottom doors, we thought was more in keeping with the architecture of the home and the.
Okay.
Things, not the kind of agrarian sort of, uh, ag look that was starting to form there.
Yeah.
Um.
We, we actually put like the two separate door styles on there kind of intentionally so that we could go back and forth about what your preferences were for the doors.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Now you know.
It was easy.
We're in. Could we maybe go back to the, uh, rendering? Thank you. Uh, and then, you know, I, I know there's kind of an attempt to make like a little like hay loft kind of door. We were just wondering like, could you just simplify that down? Do you really, you know, if you need a dormer, make it look like a dormer. But again, this is like an agrarian reference.
Like just a scale or?
We were like, just simplify it to maybe not have the cupola. And we're like, there's elements of this we really like.
Yeah, so, I talked to the homeowner. She's definitely okay with getting rid of the cupola, you know, because at first that was kind of a key part to her design that she wanted. And then as we kind of progressed through it, she, you know, started to feel that it wasn't, it didn't fit very well. Cause some of the parts of the existing home have, I don't even know what to describe, but on like her turret, it's just like a little, like, almost like a brass ball.
Yep.
She just wants something on the peak.
Hmm. Well, then tie it back to the house, but there's no, but there's no cupolas.
Yeah, exactly. So the cupola.
So on top of the.
You know, that's just going away.
Put, put a ball on there then that matches the house in front.
And, yep. This was a progression of today. So we, we, her and I discussed it earlier.
Okay.
Saves, saves time.
It, it, and, and, you know, it's really, it's really about like simulating, you've got nice windows on the side. You've got a, a nice sort of ingress egress door on the side.
Yeah, man.
I think from a new structure standpoint, you know, we understand why some people want modern garages that have opening doors for entertainment related uses to open into the backyard versus the, the, the. So we're like, you know, if you just match the doors on both sides and make them a simple form that looks like the, the bottom elevation, that's just a much simpler, cleaner kind of thing.
And to the, to the barn door aspect, the existing one actually did have barn doors on the rear, the existing one.
Really?
Really? Yeah. So if you go, well, that's, that was a part of the pictures that got.
If that's what you really want, then submit a historical photo.
Well, okay. Didn't we have a historical photo?
Yeah, I mean. Well, so that was.
There it is.
There. So that's facing the alley. So there, there is barn doors on the side that faces the actual house.
Oh, okay.
So it does have a, a, or it had a pass through. So that's currently what it looks like. Cause we took the time when we tore it down to actually salvage as much of the brick as possible. So that we could rebuild it with the old brick. And so one of the key things is having another pass through door. So we have the appropriate quantity of brick. Cause then we're getting into hunting down brick that's, you know, not going to be the exact same size and things like that.
Hmm.
So that's where it got difficult. And so we kind of did have to eat up the rear of the garage because the existing also had that barn door. Now it was tracked on the interior of the garage, not on.
Well, that makes a big difference when it, if it was one of those ones that folded along the inside.
Hmm.
Those, those were kind of the early automotive doors that they had kind of these tracks that kind of go along the inside edge. Um, those are very early, you know, model T day kind of doors. Those are appropriate, but it doesn't do what your rendering shows of kind of having tracks on the outside.
Yeah.
We just don't want that.
Yeah. So, I mean, it sounds like you're not opposed to an interior tract.
Hmm. No, if you want to make it fold and go away on the inside, that's great.
Well, it's in its size to where the doors would actually just fall within that portion of wall space. So it doesn't necessarily have to fold up or anything like that.
Hmm. I, I would just say that, you know, just be ready to propose the actual doors you want to install and everything else is your next step though.
Yeah. Hmm. Cause one of the things too.
See, see to, to us, this thing labeled self elevation, those, those doors just felt right.
Yeah.
Um. And, and they felt better than the, the north elevation, but what was happening at the bottom, we just weren't, you know.
Yeah, the way it was operated.
Being outside was not.
Cause she still wants for the north elevation door that would still operate as a standard garage door. So you have an overhead track on the inside and then she's fine with the south elevation, the actual barn doors that lead to the rear yard.
Can you just get doors that all look like the south elevation? Yeah, that's really where.
Yeah. Yeah, that's not an issue.
Um, the, the scale of the garage would be, I think what would be interesting to see is in this elevation, if you just juxtapose the actual house behind it. Is, because this is much taller than the existing garage, correct?
It's, yeah, it, it has more height because we felt that the, kind of back to where you guys wanted the roof lines to match or be closer. The pitches on the existing house have a lot, you know, steep, a steeper slope to them. And so we wanted to raise the pitch on the roof of the garage and also give it a little bit more height. Because it just, it seemed out of character being as small as it was, especially with the previous structure we know. You know, from the historical documents was like twice the size of that garage before that garage was ever built.
I, I mean, I, I suspect what happened is this home came, there's probably something more agrarian in nature. Automotive, so these, most people on Bryan Road are early adopters of cars. There's a lot of, there was a lot of automotive history of first time owner, owner, home, homeowner. Or first time car owners in, in this neighborhood.
Yeah.
Who own these prominent homes. So a lot of garages that came sort of a little bit later were automobile focused early on, especially replacement structures and replacement garages. So as you go, you know, down Bryan Road towards, um. So as you go, you know, down Bryden Road towards, going towards Bexley, the garages distinctly start changing to be much more automobile like as that ten or twenty years of just the horse was replaced by the car. So I, there's definitely a history at least of substantial garages in this neighborhood, carriage kinds of buildings. I don't think, you know, we've had people on some of the more prominent streets, you know, request three bay garages and some other bigger structures as long as they kept, they kept in the context of the neighborhood or the home.
Do you think their garage scale is okay?
I'm I'm not worried about it because there were a lot of.
Most of the other ones are much more substantial. Across the street and around her are like full blown carriages, like.
The if we go back to the PDF, Jacqueline. Yeah, there's a couple like detail things that stand out to me, like when I look at the original.
Yeah.
Like the the residence, more simple. There's a simplicity and elegance and just scale.
Yeah.
And detailing. So part of me feels like less is a little bit more on some of this. Like this, this just seems like a little fussy or overdone. And it doesn't have to be a one to one to the original, but.
Well, the original didn't have those. She, the homeowner, wanted to add them as she felt it added a little bit more character.
Yeah, I'm just talking about this structure. And then having the accessory structure echo some of the detailing.
Yeah.
What's going on in the main.
You're almost making this garage much, much more prominent than the house. You need to make it subservient to the.
Yeah, gotcha.
Yeah, and I'm all right with a little bit of.
Little flair.
It's okay, a little, but if there were maybe some, a little bit more reference to some of the detailing or some of the simplicity and stuff, just a little bit.
Yeah.
In general, I mean, it's 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 elegant. It's maybe just a little bit too far beyond what the residence wants it to be, in my opinion.
It almost just make it, make it just simpler.
That's what I think, yeah.
Yeah. So currently, I guess. Hit on some of the details that were added. So she liked the aspect of the little brick arches over the transom windows, you know, not an actual arch, but an inlay of the brick. It's a detail, kind of what you guys were talking about earlier with the windows where the opening actually has an arch, but the windows aren't.
You're going to have to make that look like a real header with an arch, though, not just a randomly cut in recessed piece that
Yeah.
doesn't make sense.
Yeah.
You know, it it, like what we don't want is to create a faux detail that just like, well, that wouldn't work for many, you know, historical source we know.
Yeah.
And then if if you could go to the rendering. I think some of the the scale and proportion are nice. The drawing and the rendering maybe are a little different in some aspects, and that's fine. I know this is just conceptual. Looking at the window and the door, the detailing around all of that, that also feels a little bit foreign to what's happening on the main residence.
We did save all the limestone lentils.
Okay.
From when we tore the garage down, and she has extras. So we're talking about adding those underneath the windows.
Okay.
Just to get to tie to the actual house itself on that rear side.
Sure.
Nice.
Because the front of the, her house is kind of interesting. The front and back, you know, the front is, has a lot of intricacies and a lot of detail, and the rear of the house doesn't. You know, like the front has dental molding and all kinds of pillars on the front porch and aspects like that. But the rear, you know, you can see there's no.
It's quite common that they rounded the corners, went back a little bit, and then stopped the face brick and cheapened the brick.
Oh, no, the brick on the rear of the house is completely different than the the front of the house as well and the side, too.
Sort of a, sort of expected in this neighborhood. It was a cost saving thing.
And color wise, too, with the windows. So we presented salvaged windows that she had found. And I'm assuming you guys are all seems in favor of actually using the salvaged items to kind of.
We we need drawings that truly show these, though, in them, just so, you know, we understand what it is. And my only worry on something like this is, you know, you you, on the next round of drawings, it really needs to show the head, the sill, the jam detail. How are you trimming it? All those little intricacies. And just because you have a salvage window, make sure it's the right thing to do. If it's really not the right thing and the right look, don't force it into the design. Sometimes people try to force these salvage items in, and they just don't look kind of like what they should.
Yeah.
I mean, I I laud the effort when you can use a recycled door or those kinds of things.
Do you guys have enough of the salvage items to do a complete garage or would it be a mixed match of?
No, so there was a set of, a set of two larger windows and then five of the slightly smaller. So the two larger would do, then do the rear side where it had the barn doors and it had the two windows on either side of the garage. And then you have the five to do three transoms that face the church and then the two transoms that are on the side of the mandor.
I think, you know, you kind of have our feedback. It's.
Yeah, just get closer to the house essentially.
It will be the next, you know, next revision will be important.
Yeah, and do check into the whether you're in the size permitted for the corner that it is, yeah, the zoning, just to make sure.
Because I can start the zoning application.
Yeah.
Well, are you also, one last thing, are you also proposing different colors of bricks? It looks like there's almost like a water table and then it transitions.
Water table and left the bottom that kind of undescribed because she had, was torn. She wanted to do that classic rock face. But now it's looking like, you know, budget wise, it's not going to be feasible. Because with it being fired, insurance is only giving her, you know, X amount of dollars, and so we have to kind of play within that. So I wanted to talk to you guys, too, if you feel if split, sorry, split face block would make sense down there or not.
Just to.
But the problem is with a lot of split faces, they look like a.
Split face.
Yeah, well, like an commercial retail center, not a, not a, not an appropriate material. There are some split masonry products that are hand, more handmade or have a lot of variation in stone product, you know, faux stone products. Some of those can be okay if we look at materials, but a lot of just the split face CMU is not really going to be appropriate.
Not the basics, okay.
It also wouldn't be, in my opinion, so bad just to take brick.
Yeah.
All the way down.
Well, it comes into a quantity issue then.
Oh, okay, you don't have enough.
Yeah, of the original. So if I can, if we can find something.
I see, that's kind of what's driving that transition.
Or you could do a contrast.
Yeah.
I mean, you could.
The predominant facades, you know, you could do the alley facing and then the side street facing. And then a similar color on the interior.
I I would just say I'm going to defer, we're not the architects, let's defer, let's defer back to.
You guys come up with.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, in your little drawing here, it looks like you've got sort of a grayer brick underneath and and that, and that's sort of historically accurate where you've got the band and.
And that's what kind of we just indicated the band.
Yeah.
On each level because the house has a band, that's, I believe, is like thirty-two inches or something like that. And so it was kind of still up in the air of what material would actually fall there.
Right.
So we just left a difference in color so we could kind of indicate where it would be.
I think you've come a long way. This is a really good start. And I certainly appreciate you coming in and getting feedback.
Yeah, well done.
Look forward to the next revision.
And so another, sorry, before I forget, the last thing was the scallop shingle. We've kind of, I've gone back and forth with a couple of my roofing crews. And there's not too many things out there per se that are even remotely budget friendly either. Not saying cheap, but, you know, within reason. And so is it something that we could be okay with going back to a three tab that was?
There's a, there's a pre-approved list is what I would say. And then also maybe things are going to be more budget friendly now that you're eliminating the cupola and some of the other things.
Yeah.
We we can't dictate what you're going to propose. We'll, we'll leave it to you to propose a product.
Okay.
Take your cues from the house, obviously.
Yeah, okay, fantastic.
All right. And I would just add in for, to represent our landscape architect who isn't here today. I know they'll always ask for just including any site stuff if they're on the site plan, if there's going to be anything like that.
She has a blue stone kind of patio that means it's from existing block area. So all we'll do is the stone back to accommodate the extra couple feet of the mid ground.
Okay.
Well said.
Yeah, not that.
Just make sure, yeah, get a good site plan, which you'll probably need for building and zoning anyway.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Case number twelve, fourteen sixty-two Bryden Road. If you could raise your right hand.
Did you have a case that we needed to take a look at as well?
I believe so.
Okay. Sure. Do you have an address perhaps?
Mr. Shulkin.
Got that on our agenda.
So could you repeat that thirteen oh nine? We have. I'm not familiar with that address.
Call what commission meeting? Was it a local meeting versus a historic resources commission by chance?
Council variances meeting.
Yes, this is not, this is the historic resources commission.
I want to say, Morgan, do you think council variances are normally at city council? Okay, city council is pretty close by. Let me see if I can bring it up on a map.
What time do you think your case was being heard?
Now, that's the crazy part. This doesn't have any information on your, this.
Oh. Oh.
Oh, no.
Have you been to the building that is to the right? It's a more historic building that's city hall. I don't even know.
I'm sorry, I don't have more info for you, but you have a document that says this address.
Yeah, the application.
Oh.
For specifically for tonight.
Specifically for tonight. To have a meeting tonight and the address on my paperwork. What does it say?
Instead of building.
I think it's just.
Yeah, exactly.
The hearings are.
Usually you're notified during hearing.
It comes here, it's a council meeting to a bright city hall building. If you go out the front door and come right, it's almost like. It's not very far. So do I cross the street or? Yeah, you'll cross the street after you get through. You'll be able to see, yeah. Because I don't even know. Oh, my gosh, I wish I knew.
They can look at, or, yeah, we have a map up here. So we are currently located, that's a green roof, but we are in this building right now. So you probably entered from this entrance right here. And then city council is just further south. So this is the city council building. So we have like the green space outside.
Out there, right out the door.
What's the address?
Yeah, I'll look up the address. Let me see here. Oh, it looks like ninety west Broad is the official, you know, city council address.
But you'll, you'll enter in off North Front Street.
Thank you.
Right on North. Yes.
It's very close.
It looks like a. It's, it's this way.
This way. You can see it right here if you want.
Yeah.
Literally, yeah, that building right there. Do you see that one?
Yes. I'm sorry, sir.
Oh, you're, you're okay.
It's okay. Glad we figured that out.
Okay. Do you swear to tell the truth in your testimony before the commission this evening?
I do.
If you could state your full name and association with the property for record.
Or over the, you know, over the.
Thank you, Jacqueline.
Okay, this application, conceptual application for fourteen sixty-two Bryden Road. The proposal is to demolish a circa nineteen hundred brick carriage house and then construct a new three car carriage house per this many materials. So demolition was previously reviewed conceptually in twenty twenty two and then again at the August twenty twenty five hearing. The property transferred to new ownership in twenty twenty three. So this property includes a nineteenth century, two and a half story brick Queen Anne style home and a nineteen hundred, one and a half story brick carriage house also is on the property. So historic mapping bookends the estimated construction date to be right at the turn of the century. The structure does not appear on the eighteen ninety nine base atlas, but is present on the Sanborn mappings by nineteen oh one. And the Sanborn mapping, I'll scroll down here, here we go. Nineteen oh one includes the one and a half story masonry, which is that pink red color. That's what that indicates. Carriage barn that is within the same footprint and location. The carriage barn, you know, showed to have a non combustible roof with the open circle with a framed cornice at the east elevation, which is that dashed line. And then as automobile technology rose in popularity in nineteen tens and twenties, a number of carriage barns, particularly in Bryden Road Historic District, were converted to use as garage in Columbus. And so by nineteen twenty or nineteen twenty one, the carriage barn was relabeled as auto on the nineteen twenty one Sanborn map. Still the same placement, materials, size, all that. And then the nineteen thirty-three rental advertisement does confirm that the structure was in use and then it specifies as a three car garage. So by the mid century, various national trends such as mass transit systems, increased popularity with the automobile interstate highway system, insured mortgages and GI bill following World War Two spurred a trend for suburban homes. So those who owned homes in the denser part of the cities ad adapted by dividing their larger homes into flats, including fourteen sixty-two Bryden Road, of course, as we know. And then a city bulletin actually confirms that this property was no exception and that the carriage barn turned garage was approved to be converted into a living unit in nineteen forty-eight. And then we have additional window openings were probably added around that time to adapt the structure to that use. And we do have nineteen ninety-two property photos, application photos that show the current alterations to the brick were completed by that point. Original windows that are present in the nineteen nineties photos indicate that the window openings are likely historic, although the windows themselves had since been removed and replaced with nonhistoric windows in those same openings. So based on the historic documentation and property file photos, the residents throughout the history of this property appeared to have been early adopters of national trends. The alterations appear limited to adapting the structure primarily in the nineteen tens and nineteen forties with those alterations in line with those specific patterns of history. The structure retains its original location and setting. The structure largely retains its original brick masonry materials and running bond pattern. And then there's areas of infill that adapted the structure have remained primarily masonry as well. The original masonry and cross gable design remains, allowing the structure to read as and retain its feeling and association as a carriage barn. The primary alterations that have been made to the structure serve as physical representation of historic trends, indicating the adaptations to a garage and carriage house. So the workmanship of the masonry structure has allowed the carriage barn to endure some more recent years or decades of delayed maintenance. Due to the dis repairs, the applicant has provided a structural engineer's report that was requested by the commission. In keeping with the recommendations of that structural engineer's report, the Columbus Historic Preservation Office has previously administratively approved adding heliotide, helical stitch ties to rebuild a collapsed masonry wall in the Bryden Road Historic District, as well as we have approved standard tie rods. Steel tie rods are often necessary and have historically been used for older brick of masonry structures. Additionally, as stated by the engineer's report, the mortar is mostly missing or deteriorated from the structure, which can add to weakening the brick walls. And the historic preservation office does concur with the recommendation to repoint areas in need of mortar. Mortar is considered a sacrificial material and maintenance is needed over time to maintain the structural stability of masonry buildings. So based on the information available, the preservation office recommends repair of historic resources in line with the structural assessment recommendations. At the November business meeting, the commission noted that since demolition is proposed, they will need to know the history of the structure, when it was built, et cetera. The commission noted that although the structure may have had alterations over time, that this does not preclude the structure from being contributing. The commission had asked about a site plan and whether it's landscaping, what's happening if the new building is constructed. And since this is a conceptual application, the commission should offer design feedback that can be utilized by the applicant for the refined proposal for review to future HRC meeting, and so no action is required. The basis for the staff recommendation is the city code three one one six point one four standards for demolition and the city code three one six point one two standards for new correction, new construction, as well as the guidelines regarding garages and outbuildings. Thank you.
Before I sort of up to the applicant to talk, what I want to know, I think the biggest thing this commission will struggle with is a proposal for complete demolition of the structure. I just want to be really clear about that. I think, you know, when I look at what's proposed, yes, there are elements of a new program and a desirability to kind of make an accessory structure. We get that, but we're going to have to see some real compelling issue of why the original building can't either be remodeled, renovated, reconfigured, added to even in its current space to maybe expand on it. Other things, the the structural engineering report really sort of says like, there needs to be some repairs, but there's no imminent danger. It's been dry. So I think from a conceptual standpoint, even before we get into the nuances of design, we need to understand conceptually why there's a demolition proposal.
Well, I think, for one, I actually.
And that we could support because it's, it's, you know, from, from the guidelines that we. And that, and that we could support. Cause it's, it's, you know, from, from the guidelines that we have, we don't have the basis really. Of any real meat that's going to allow us to go that direction, I think.
Understandable. And, and I agree. I, I appreciate the, a kind of history lesson of the, the site. Some of those images I'd not seen, but, um. I think, um. With the structural report, um, yes, there are some recommendations that. Were made in the structural report that said, of course, it could be, that it could be maintained. These things would have to be done. Um, I do not have sufficient data from the client who is also going to be the contractor of this project. What the cost of that would be. Uh, he, uh, he feels that it will be cost prohibitive for him to.
Financial hardship though is defined in our guidelines and he, he should probably read that section because there's a real stringent set of paragraphs about hardship.
Sure.
And it's generally not just because it was too expensive to do something as being the reason why demolish something.
Okay. And, and I'm, I'm just trying to kind of give you the, I, I understand that.
I'm just trying to give you a little bit of feedback as we go along the way to help you kind of guide your clients' discussion.
That's fine. Um, I, you know, I think operationally, I mean, I think the, the last. Um, carriage house that we, we just looked at, there was some history of like the Brighton Road garages. Uh, uh, being designed for the Model Ts or, you know, like kind of assuming that first class of vehicles. This garage would sort of fit in that category. It doesn't have proper backing distance.
It's very vernacular. Yeah.
Yeah, it doesn't have proper backing distance. Um, the, uh, the garage is not, not deep enough. For today's standards. Um, certainly there, I mean, I agree. That. Work could be done to salvage the building. Um, and. There is a lot of significant work that is even beyond the structural engineer's report. You know, in terms of mismatching brick that's been added in over time. I mean, it is a, uh, I think at the last conceptual review. It was discussed that it'd be a great, uh, installation project. And I agree with that, you know, like it. It, it's an kind of interesting building in, in terms of the materials and the kind of. Palimpsest of additions and retractions that have been made over time.
It, in and to that though, you know, that actually sort of the, the mucked with. Architecture helps you make a case for why you could further alter it though and make it pretty and make it.
Save two walls, do this.
And like parts of it, you know, you probably have more of a palette in front of you to be able to alter this than maybe most other historic structures. In lieu of just a demolition. And so I think, you know, when I, this, this has, yeah, I think this is a lot more opportunity than.
Didn't sound like it sometime, but.
It, it, the.
Different opportunities. Yes. It does just opportunities that align with.
The owner's goal.
The owner's goal for a property to, to, uh, develop it as ADU to have a garage, which is. Um, which is usable by modern standards.
But you know, and it, and it, it, you, you could conceivably propose this, an addition that maybe includes some space. Untraditionally in a way to make a garage addition to it. And maybe the, this whole structure could become the ADU. I don't, you know, there's, there's just ways that I think have to be a little out of the box. With this thing. And I think this commission has been very good at supporting variances and maybe anything else that needs to go along with that. Because if we can save more historic footprint and fabric, that's where, you know, that's what we're charged with doing.
And you strike me as the right guy to do it.
Yeah.
Yeah, what won't work again, I think.
Articulation of detail is great. So I think you can, I think you can pull this off.
I, I agree with, uh, go ahead, Nick.
No, I was just gonna say what won't work is, um, um, doesn't meet budget. So we have to demolish it or it's a difficult project. So we have to demolish it. Or, you know, those kind of things will not work. Obviously you have to, I think, let the client, your client know that.
Yeah, and I, I think they're aware of that.
Yeah.
It's just, it, it becomes a. Happy to pill. A very practical issue. Uh, are they willing to put that money into this structure?
Yeah.
To save it? Or are they not willing to do that? And I think the answer. That I'm hearing at this point is they're not willing to put the money into the.
That, yeah, that's, that's going to be another problem because this is a, yeah, it's a historic structure, right? And it's a historic home.
Clyde, this is where you come in.
You have to, they're supposed to save it.
Demolition by neglect. Yeah, there is a section in our code about demolition by neglect.
So he's got to keep it up. Now that they already know what, what it needs, it's like, all right, we went to the doctor, we got the doctor's report.
Right. So if the owner just lets it fall down.
Yeah, that's a whole different deal.
Then they're in violation.
Now he's already gave us the report. So. You got it. You got it.
I think the, understand your statement that, that maybe the, what we're saying up here is in alignment, is it not in alignment with the owner? Uh, I do think though, uh, the property, like others have said, it offers unique opportunity in, in, in two, two ways. One, there's a lot of really amazing historic fabric. And like you mentioned. It shows the passage of time and although some of those things might not be the best for it. There's also actually seeing that history in the facade is right there. What that also does though, is it opens us up to be super flexible about what we could see for proposals. Because it's not some pristine thing that we would say, no, you have to articulate this detail just like that. I, I, the opportunities are really open in my, my view if. There was some creativity in thinking about this in a different way. Uh, of preserving that, that historic structure or portions of that historic structure. And then hopefully still expanding in a way where it could be, uh, a habitable unit or a garage. Or meet the, the owner's needs. Now, when you talk about budget, I understand it probably is cheaper just to knock it down and. Start over, but un- unfortunately I don't think.
I mean, I, I look at it this way as already, it's like, you know, that you proposed a structure that had, you know, more garage to it, had it, you know. It was bigger in dimension, maybe even somewhat. And I look at like just this left hand corner where I go, okay, there's a big old green patch next to this structure. Where you could erect and even an addition onto this thing and still have that, you know, you know. We're, we're only on the exterior alteration path of things, but on the interior.
We're not convincing the vision triangle.
Come on.
Yeah.
But you know, we will, we will, we will support, you know.
We got the tail, we got the dog.
Right.
Yeah, come on.
But, but you know, we, we just heard a, a garage variance case where somebody's going to. Well, effectively they will need a garage variance, but a garage that had burned down that's on a corner lot. And we said, you know, hey, just make sure you check with your vision triangle issues. Because we'll need to support that in order to make sure that the historic fabric is conforming with the context versus, you know. The city code about vision triangles.
I mean, I just look at this in terms of, I mean, if we could just talk for a second about. The mast involved this building. I mean, just pragmatically, I can't. I am having trouble getting my head around doing an addition to it that would allow for. Proper head height on the second floor to, I mean, it's so low. It's not really, I mean, even though it has been used as an apartment, there's no way that this was ever a habitable. Um, I mean, by code, it would not, it would not pass as a habitable space. It doesn't have even six feet, eight inches of head height in the cross gable. And so. If that's part of the program of this project.
Uh, you can show good cause of saving as much as you can. That doesn't mean that we wouldn't be perhaps considering height adjustment or some of those.
And I'll say this, um, that maybe not all buildings are suited for all kinds of programs. Again, not something, you know, you'll have to look at that with your client, with what's available, the size, the scale, the design, the historic fabric.
Can develop a scope for it and all that.
Maybe it's not feasible as a, as whatever they have in mind. I, we don't know. You'll have to look at that. Um, we are willing to consider options as long as, you know, the historic guidelines are met.
It would be a shame to just let it fall apart. So if you can come up with something that meets a lot of his boxes, come on, that's what you got.
Or maybe, maybe it needs to have a different owner.
Well, we've been through that already. On this property.
Because the current owner needs to maintain the building.
Doctor report, yeah.
I don't mean to indicate that, um, he doesn't have that intention. He's obviously investing a lot of money in the existing structure as we speak. So that, that is certainly not his intention. I, I think that the structural report from my, I would. Actually really love to, um, get a site visit. So that we can actually see the conditions of this structure, independent of the structural report.
Represents the structure.
What's that?
You don't feel that that report accurately describes the structure in its current state?
I, I think, I mean, I look at the, uh.
That's very simple. It's yes or no, but you don't.
Uh, no, I don't think it.
That's fine.
Completely represents.
So you, you've been in the building?
Yeah.
Oh, so it's safe.
Well, I, I'm not, I'm not going to get tricked into that. I, I, I'm not saying that.
If you're afraid to go in the building.
I mean, the pictures do say a thousand things. I mean, that gap is no joke. And if that interior shot where there's what, six, eight inches between, you know, that Boeing, I mean, that, there is some serious stuff going on.
There is some.
There's just something really cool and quirky and tells a story. And there's something worth value of, of preservation. And that's why we're here.
Yeah, but the letter addresses those two issues, right? And that's the problem. It says it can be fixed.
Right, yeah, that's.
Says it can be fixed, so.
That amount is not. So far that you can't pull it back. I mean, there, there have been bigger bows than that pulled back with ties. It's pretty amazing.
Plates and ties go.
But I think it's also a mindset too. And that's going to be part of your cell, I think, with your owner. So if you're not buying it, I don't know how he's going to buy it, but I hope you're the right guy. I think, I think there's a reason why you're here and we have this great building and you're going to pull it off.
No.
Are you in?
Oh no, we, we have to think about that a little.
Oh, okay.
Little bit.
Okay, cause it's, it's five inches at the worst. And I assume they took the measurement at the worst. That's not that much to pull back.
Yeah.
Just a thought. Well, anyway.
Yeah.
You want more feedback? Be careful.
No, I, I, I get it. And I appreciate the feedback.
Yeah.
Um, I think, you know, we'll, we'll pass that on to the client and.
Thank you.
See what our next steps are.
Lot of things.
What's that?
Don't do it, do it in the morning or, you know, when there's not a lot of chaos already in the day and. Have an early morning meeting, coffee, the whole nine and sun's shining, all the good things, right?
Right.
It's dry. The report says it's dry as a bone. That's good things, right?
Okay. I think that's all we have today then.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your patience.
Yep.
You're back, ma'am.
Well, if we can.
We have no idea what you're, you're about.
Yeah. Oh, I'm.
I'm sorry. I don't believe we have anything on our agenda for you at all. This is, and it's a different thing that we normally deal with. Could it be an improper date? Maybe?
So that lady walked her here personally.
Wow.
This was the day I was supposed to submit it. I submitted it. I'm supposed to be somewhere on this day, on this day.
Is it an area commission she's supposed to be in? Are, are you supposed to be at an area commission?
I went there too and.
Can we?
What's your, um, what is the issue that you're, you're meeting about?
Yep. That's not our commission.
Yeah, this is historic resource. Yeah.
Take care of bricks, paint, old buildings. New buildings and historic districts. We, that's a whole different thing.
I don't, I don't mean to be abrupt, but I, we kind of have.
I'm sorry.
Our meeting.
But we need to wrap up this, we're at the end of this meeting. And I don't want to be insensitive, but we got to make some motions real quick and, but thank you. Didn't mean you got to leave, just means we got to wrap this one up. Is there any new business, old business?
There's, we're on to new business.
Election.
Chair election.
Oh, that's right.
Jacqueline, what do we need to do?
Say aye.
Make a motion?
If you make any, if someone can, you know, make a nomination for, um, chair election, so chair, vice chair and. Uh, and then we vote on, you know, those nominations. Uh, you need to, the person who's being nominated needs to accept. Um, and then you vote. Am I missing anything there?
I'd like to nominate, uh, Joseph McCain for chair.
Here, here.
You accept?
I do accept.
Okay.
So I think, I think somebody needs to make a motion.
He's made the motion.
Oh yes, Stuart made the mo, or you nominated. I guess we can do maybe if, just a motion then.
No discussion? Does everybody agree?
Okay.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Abstain?
Abstain official.
Okay.
Passes.
All right.
Okay, I, uh, nominate, uh, uh, Stuart Gibbity for the vice, vice president.
Do all that now, do we?
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, I think we just take care of it.
Except.
I do, yeah.
All right. Yeah, second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Yeah, we're done.
Okay. No items of old business?
No items of old business or new business? We just, we need a motion to adjourn.
Hey.
Salute.
Second.
Having a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye.